So, no sirs.
You have to behave yourself.
It must be the chair.
It's not seat.
That's right. So I'd like to call this meeting of the Town Council for Thursday, May 9th, to order, please, if you would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. By way of announcements, there's an upcoming town, there are upcoming Town Council meetings. Thursday, May 23rd is a regular meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room, along with Thursday, June 13th, which is also a regular meeting. And then Monday, June 17th, from 9:00 to 4:00, in the Carriage Shed at Buckley's Great Stakes, we'll be having our retreat/work session. And Thursday, June 27th, will be a regular meeting of the Town Council. Eileen, did you have anything to add?
Okay. The transfer station summer hours of remaining open until 7:00 PM on Thursdays begins today and will run through Thursday, September 12th. The transfer station will be closed on Wednesday, May 22nd, for employee training. The Public Works Department will be hosting the open house for the new highway facility at 76 Turkey Hill Road on Saturday, May 18th, from 9:00 to noon. The event will feature a ceremony to recognize the achievement of everyone involved of the new facility and a touch-a-truck event, along with other fun activities for kids and adults alike. And I just, we were just talking at staff meeting tonight, today, about all of the, about how well these events are attended. I think Kyle was saying that you had, I forget how many hits on Facebook you had, 4,200 hits on this event. So it kind of goes along with Parks and Rec, and they're doing all kinds of fabulous stuff over at the library, and all kinds of interesting things that are going on. So, once again, dog licenses, we really urge you, if you haven't licensed your dog, please license your dog, but they're due by April 30th. Currently, there are 1,000 dogs who have not been licensed. So I'm not sure what the fee is.
$7.50 for a dog.
$7.50, and if you, if you're late, it's cost you $32 more.
Right.
Right? So please come in and have your dogs registered. So dog fines and late fees begin on June 1st. Thank you.
Is that it? Thank you. Any questions for the Town Manager on her announcements? No. Just checking. Yeah, I want to point out that Peter Albert is excused for this evening. Thank you, Nancy. He's unavailable for this meeting. And that's it. Comments from the press and public? Anybody from the public like to make comments?
Hi, Lorraine Allen, 16 French Court. I've been talking in the last six weeks or so with the state, DHHS and DES, and Boston University, about applying for one of the Agency of Toxic and Substance Disease Registry National Grants. So for those of you who don't know what that is, there are going to be six sites selected across the country that come from PFAS-impacted communities. We are an ATSDR-designated site in the greater Merrimack area. They have us in the system, so they know who we are. So I wanted to tell you about this grant briefly, see if you had any questions about it, and ask you, I have a draft here that can be followed for a support letter, which is very important. The grant really seeks to recruit families, children, and adults. 350 children is the approximate number, and 1,000 adults. And it will offer urine and blood samples and collect health data that people will give permission for. And the goal of this grant is to take six sites across the country, put all that data together, and get some answers. So the grant is absolutely phenomenal. Just to give you a sense, because I know various health conditions are touchy and sensitive matters, cancers are not included in this because they're very hard to quantify as to the why. So what is included is things that can be really verified with dose reconstruction. They're looking to take the great data that we have in New Hampshire, we have phenomenal data with air deposition modeling and the groundwater testing that we have, and the wells also will be included, the private wells and public water. So they're going to analyze levels of exposure, and there's all kinds of ghouls there in science. They've talked with Brandon, he was very enthusiastic about it, we had a great conversation. They've talked with Kathy Beam. I believe they talked with Clark perhaps yesterday, I didn't hear back about that. We've talked with Dr. Chan and Lisa Morris. Everybody is very on board in sharing information, and it's absolutely fabulous. So they look at things like, anything from cholesterol to immune functioning to neuropsychological, actually, including, I don't know how they're going to quantify things like ADHD, what would be typical in communities and what would be off Asperger's, things like that. But it's based on the CDC's science. So they have research that's out there that associates the class of chemicals with certain disorders, and a lot of it is in animals, as you know, not enough in humans. So they're seeking to really, you look at the gambit, not just the sites like Husick that have higher numbers than we do, but the sites that have a whole range of exposures. So we have a very strong proposal, we have really good support here, and I don't want to get into it too much because it's, it's very complicated, I've been writing parts of it. So we're a citizen group, we've been tasked to be, I am what's called a co-principal investigator. Sounds very official, I've never felt so official. So what that means is you seek to answer a research question. The grant is very specific, we don't have a lot of leeway, we can't go in there and say, "This is what we really want to know." You know, we can perhaps add in one variable, and I don't think we're going to do that necessarily with health. We may look at the impact of air depository. I'm leaving that up to the scientists, there are some brilliant people working on this, and that's that. So what would be helpful is a letter, which can be emailed and sent, and I can give this to someone here. They wrote a draft for me with who it's addressed to, and ideally it would be done ASAP, and it names the RFA and the name of the whole shebang there. The first two paragraphs are very brief, but very, kind of clunky, but that hits upon the main points. Then there's a section here that you can write your personalized comments, which would basically be, hopefully you'll be in support of this, and why it benefits our community, thoughts on our ability to engage. I think the strength here, which is really wonderful, is we have a community where a lot of people have been really involved, and as everybody knows, it's been quite a process. It's been a bumpy process, a difficult process, an emotional process. People are, people are getting down, though, they really, really are. So one of the strengths we have here is not just the state data, we know we don't have the resources to look at the health, they haven't been able to do that, but we have the ability to engage, and that is key. Because when letters go out, or some of the sites out there are seeking to study people where their DOHs in some states have no relationship with the communities, and the community members may not have relationships with each other, so the likelihood in the recruitment of the numbers is not great. So we are coming up roses in that area, because you know we are persistent, if anything, right? So here is, you know, the draft, and I don't know who I can leave that with, maybe, I was thinking that.
Don't you leave it with Eileen?
I was guessing. So are there questions that people have?
So, Lorraine?
Yes.
What's the timing of this? Do we need to get this letter in right away?
We do, because for the last month, we've been talking back and forth, they had to, you know, verify every single thing under the sun. It all checked out, yay. And they had to get commitments from some key people in the state, and they had to look at themselves, at the air modeling, and talk with Brandon, because dose reconstruction is very complicated, because it isn't just everybody in the town got what they got, and that was that. I was advocating from the start to have the Litchfield well owners and the Bedford neighborhood also included, because as you know, it isn't about the geographical boundaries. I have a relationship with some of the folks in Bedford. Litchfield, we can engage, and we can get that relationship, I'm sure. We've talked to Ben Chan about that, he feels very comfortable in reaching out to the people who, you know, had the blood samples and things like that. He's very enthusiastic. So it took so long to get it nailed down with all these parts. They couldn't ask for the letters until they verified that there was complete support, that Litchfield, and it was, yes, they're in, no, they're out, we want to focus just here, maybe more. Because originally, you know, we had spoken about this bill ages ago, that, whatever night we were out there in the rain, we were looking to study, a couple of years ago I was saying this, you know, Bennington, Husick Falls in Merrimack, because we share a chemical profile in the make-up and composition of that. That turned out to be, Bennington is doing their own thing, they're very pleased with however Vermont does things, so, so they're good. Husick Falls, the New York Department of Health has a person there who moved there from Connecticut, and he was all gung ho about studying this in this grant. So he decided to apply for Husick Falls, Petersburg, New York, and Newburgh, which is a DOD site, so two industry and one DOD. And I'm thrilled that their state can go to bat for them, and they have the resources, but they also don't have engagements with the communities, so, but, so Dr. Chan reached out and said, "Hey, you know, maybe we can work together." He was talking to them all, and they all kind of wiggled away and said, you know, "No thanks." So then there was talk about collaborating with the community en masse, and one of the issues is, if there are six sites across the country, they're going to do this fairly regionally, right? So there's Massachusetts, two apps coming out of Massachusetts, so there was talks with UMass, and talks with Silent Springs, and way more talks than I could even schedule in. But we did all that to talk about collaborating, and the consensus with the university folks is, we really should be a standalone study, and for them to go to bat for us and put their time and resources in is, it's rather overwhelming, it's amazing. So it's a good piece of science if we're approved. If we're not approved, they're going to be committed, they're going to have our information, and I suspect they would then look, hopefully, at a National Institute of Health grant, which would give them a little more leeway, and the state a little more leeway in some of the things they'd like to know, so.
Yep.
Do you have specific, almost like a executive summary of what the grant will do, so that the council can read it and, and then support it, or?
Sure. The whole RFA, they didn't do an abstract of it, but here, they did a very brief one with the title and basically what it proposes to carry out, which is really gathering these samples and putting the help.
If there's a way to get a little bit more information than that?
I can send the RFA, and you can scan it, because it's, it's very, it's very, very lengthy, but I think in the first few pages, it does summarize it. Do you want me to send that to your office?
Yes, please.
Or to everyone, or to Town Council?
You can send it to the Town Council, me, whatever, in any way that you want, and if you send it to me, I'll make sure they get it. So when does it need to be come in for?
They ideally would like this tomorrow, which is, I was going to, I find this out on Tuesday, and I thought, "Well, we have to ask in person, it's a Town Council meeting." I did have, the state, it's very, it doesn't, you don't have to wordsmith it, like, I can give you this, and I can even send you the Word file of it, unless you have people who type really fast, which you probably do. And then you can use this draft in format, which just can get emailed in, and I put the email, so it's.
So who's administering this? Is this a grant for the state, or for?
The state, the state is supporter, because they did not want to do this.
Who gets the grant?
So the grant goes through Boston University, yeah, and they conduct it. A group called Eastern Research Group, with one of our residents, whose name is Rebecca DeVries, works for, she has done a lot of work with me, and she's been going to bat, they're going to do some data collection. So they're going to have a partnership in this, and our citizens group is named, and we actually will have a budget for things like copying, and mailing, and outreach, and things like that, but we're not going to quit our jobs over it, I'm sure, so.
Great. Nancy, you had a question?
Well, I guess, I guess that was part of my question, too, that, oh, thank you. Off the top of my head, I think, I think anybody, all of us would be supportive of additional information, engaging, and you're right, the community is well-engaged. I just need details.
Sure.
You know, I, I'm not confident without having looked at it, examined it, and I see no reason off the top of my head why we wouldn't.
Sure.
But I don't want to automatically say yes when we haven't evaluated it, that's the problem.
That makes sense, you have to know what you're signing on for.
So I'm not sure how that would be handled. I mean, it's not an agenda item, so I'm not sure how we do this, or?
You need a motion?
Me either, unless you want to make a motion to do something at this point.
You want?
No, go ahead.
Well, I'd be, I have no problem in making a motion, I just want to be able to make a contingent upon the appropriateness of it, and who's going to make that decision? You need it tomorrow, and I don't see it happening tomorrow.
No, they, they had given me the date tomorrow, but I see this going into the beginning of next week, because they're not going to send this out.
So there has to be some time allowed, and who makes that decision? I mean, we're not meeting. Let's say whoever is going to be reviewing it has some questions, and, well, you contact everybody else? That's the dilemma, I mean.
I understand, yes, Bill.
I was going to say, my sense is, Lorraine has information to give to Eileen. It's going to be late anyway, why don't we just agenda it for May 23rd? That'd be the first thing, and that way, people have time to read it.
No, they, they have to get it in by then, and I do apologize for that, because this was, first of all, in April, the beginning of April, when this was finally announced, it was delayed from January 1st. There was seven forecasts, is what they call this of this, and what finally happened is, I had been talking with UNH and Dartmouth since last October, and they both declined to commit very politely over the first week in April.
So, Lorraine, are you asking for the council to sign a letter, or are you asking for individuals to send in letters, or?
Well, I think it's important to have our local government saying, you know, you're not going to do things behind your back.
Yeah.
And it's contingent upon approval, you know, we don't even know if we're going to get this thing, but it basically, the point is, the strength of local support, state support, and things like that, and I asked all our reps to sign onto something, is to state that if a community is in support of something, the success, you know, increases, so that's the reason for that. And I know, because I'm under fire for parts that I have to write about outreach and engagement that we've been talking about all month, but it wasn't ready until they had all these pieces in place. But, you know, take faith that maybe if someone wants to reach out to Ben Chan or something, he might be able to give you a quick overview.
Are you getting a letter of support from the state?
The state department, they are writing a letter of support, DHHS and DES are both writing support letters.
That they're investigating.
Did Bedford and Litchfield provide you with support letters?
Bedford and Litchfield were literally just finally okay to be added on late yesterday afternoon, so.
So you haven't talked to them yet?
I have talked to the reps in Bedford and Litchfield, and I asked Wendy Thomas to talk to them, because they're up there doing whatever they're doing in Concord every day, so, and they're very, yeah, they're very supportive. And Ben said, "Yes, absolutely." He does have a relationship with, with the towns, because Litchfield, I don't, I haven't had much engagement with Litchfield, but, so Ben feels, you know, he has the support, DES has the support.
How about the Town Council and Litchfield Selectmen? Have you spoken to them?
I haven't, I haven't as of yet, yes. But the state there, DHHS, said yesterday, the best way to go about that was that they would be a liaison with those two communities. What was kind of funny is, they asked if we could write, if BU could write a part-time position for DHHS into the grant, which was kind of funny, I think it's just how they fund it, which I don't know that that's going to happen, but I was like, ooh. So they did say that they were very comfortable being the liaison with those two towns, if we didn't want to play that role, but I think it's important for, you know, people to connect with people to connect. So, yes, so this is just to get everything in, because universities need, it's due in DC or Atlanta, wherever the heck it goes, by the end of the month, but they need to have it in a couple of weeks earlier, because their institution has to review whatever they have for their internal blah, 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 and everything like that. So that's why.
I, I think the council needs to discuss how that, how it will take place, though, now.
Yeah.
Yes, Nancy.
I suppose one of the things that would provide us comfort is that if we contact DHHS and DES.
Yes.
Speak with them about how much they've reviewed the grant, what are their feelings for the grant, to be able to provide comfort for us in terms of any possible ramifications, but still independently, we have to look at it as well. But if we feel comfortable that DHHS and DES has reviewed the grant application and all the implications, and they're comfortable with it, then I feel a little bit more comfortable with it.
Yes, pardon.
Yeah, I think I get a little more comfort when DHHS is saying, "Can we come to the table and have a part-time position on the grant?" I think if they were thinking it was invalid, they wouldn't be there, but it'd be good.
But I'd have to call and verify.
Right, and it would be good to have that summary as well.
And Ben is right, and he's very familiar, so, because there's no, you know, I'm, I'm a person, so asking me questions about it, you could, I could answer them, but ask the person with the doctor in front of his name, right? So it's official, I don't take offense, so. So I can leave you this, this draft, and I can email a copy of this draft, if you want, and I can email you also the full RFA. I can do that.
And as best a summary as you can, a higher-level summary, because, you know, you're all familiar with all the technical aspects of it, and I'm not. So the easier it is to, you know, to understand and follow who's giving the grant and that kind of thing, who, what department, is it the federal government?
The CDC.
Okay, so, but what I'm saying is, if you just put all those types of things together, it would be better than just mailing the Magna Carta.
Hold on, wait till you get up.
You're also very familiar. Introduce yourself, and your address.
No, but she wasn't, she was talking.
Catherine Hodge, 44 Belmont Drive. The actual package that you're going to be getting, it's basically the first 44 pages are what is the pertinent information. It's 246 pages, I think, but majority of it is all the forms that are going to be filled out by the participants, by the doctors, by everything else. So all the pertinent information that you need is in the first 44 pages.
Simple.
So that, it's, it's basically straightforward English.
It is very straightforward, because what they're doing is, they're using academic and community partnerships to gather data, is what they're doing, because they want to get that data, and they want to do this quickly, and they're using this as a foundation of study across the nation, so that's, it's very specific when you read it, but it isn't, it's doable to glance at it. Have you read that?
Barb, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, a question, Lorraine. What is the official name of the group the letter is going to?
The group is, the, the support letter is going to Dr. Hyger Bernase at the School of Environmental Health at Boston University. The title of the proposal will be "Health Implications of Exposure to PFAS-Contaminated Drinking Water in the Merrimack, New Hampshire Area," in response to the Centers for Disease Control, ATSDR, Intramural Research Program Office, very long, blah, 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 then they have this RFA number. So, but basically, we are collecting information, we're not collecting, you know, we're not going out there and collecting this from people.
It's a BU grant, is what it is.
BU grant.
Yes, it's a BU grant, and that's our academic partner in ERG, Eastern Research Group, is going to be doing the data collection, and we're working with, with all of them, so.
So it wasn't initiated by the CDC? I'm just trying to find out where it begins.
The CDC has been asked to fund a multi-site study for the last couple of years, and when they post it, we all knew this was posting, people are free to apply for them.
Okay, but all I'm just saying is, I just wanted to know where it starts, so it, it actually is a grant from the university to, to make this occur?
It's the grant from the CDC. There's federally appropriated funding.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yes, first, there was a multi-site exposure study that was done, that Senator Shaheen had, had started this off, that looks at military sites only, that really does look to, almost do GAS mapping kind of, we have, but not so much, to look at what the data is there. And then came this health study.
Okay.
That included, and she actually went to bat with us in mind, and asked that it include industry-impacted, not only DOD sites. So, we don't know the breakdown, six, six grants.
So, okay, so there are grants from the CDC for this purpose, and, and the university is applying for them?
The university is, in, the university is the primary applicant, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You need the community and academic partners.
So they'll be controlling all the statistics, all the monies, all that stuff?
You are able to maintain, they just said in the 11th hour, their own data set, which is a very good thing, because when this started, the CDC said, "You're going to send us, you're going to collect and send, they're going to analyze it en masse, and we won't know." So what we won't be doing is, we won't be saying, "Hey, this is what's going on."
But BU is in charge, is my point.
Yes, so we have.
BU is going to receive the funding, and they're responsible for managing the funding portion of it.
So if it makes you more comfortable, there is no intent here to grab some data and put it in the newspaper, that, that's not going to happen.
Didn't even cross my mind.
Right? You never know, you know, what people are thinking, so it isn't.
If I thought of it, I'd be open about it.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So if you can send that data to us, that'd be great, we'll react to it as best we can. Couple of us can probably take a look at it, if it makes sense to call a quorum together or something, I'm sure we can manage that.
Sure. And our state reps have written today, they wrote a letter of support, because basically, letter of support is, you'll see how this first two paragraphs are.
Do you need a motion? Okay.
Do I need a motion to do that? Probably to cover it.
It would probably be good just to cover it, if you would like to make one.
I can try. Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, motion to send letter of support for the BU study with Dr. Hyde.
Hyger Bernase.
There you go. In support of, you know, obtaining the grant from the CDC after research has taken place regarding this summer.
After successfully verifying and validating the information that is appropriate from Merrimack.
Thank you.
How's that sound?
Is that, are you good with that?
Adding that?
Yeah, I, yes. If people are comfortable with that, then, then fine. I, I wasn't sure whether we wanted to try and vote on sending a letter, or just vote on evaluating and researching and making a decision as soon as we can in the future.
Finley looks like he has a.
Well, my heart's with you, but I, I really, and I get the difficulty of timing, but I hesitate. The last time I did it was as a kid, I got in the Army for three years, it was magical how it happened. But so, sorry, I just, I just, I'm a little concerned about it, and I don't know how to best handle it, so.
Are you concerned about the study, or just the speed at which we have to do?
Right, I mean, I, I would definitely not be opposed to getting back together somehow for something special, if we could fit it in.
You would or would not be opposed?
I would not be opposed to that. But to vote on it this evening, I just have a little difficulty.
The vote this evening, the way Barbara put it, was to send the letter after it's been reviewed and understood by the council, and so that would almost require us to get back together to say, "Okay, we understand it and believe it." I think that's the way I would interpret that motion.
After verification?
We had to call a special meeting that could be done in the next week, but.
Okay.
I would, that's what I would foresee that we'd do, to try and alleviate those concerns, to get a vote tonight, if, if you don't, if you're not comfortable with that.
No, well, that, if we, if we're going to get back together to, to do it, then.
There has to be a warrant for final support.
Okay, thank you. Does that adequately explain your motion?
Yes, it does, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, did we get a second for that?
I'll, I'll second on that.
Seconded by Nancy. Okay, any other discussion or comments? Barbara?
I'll volunteer to look at it as well.
Okay, good. Anything else? Eileen? Lud? Go ahead, Eileen.
I just, I just want to read a paragraph to you. "The health outcome study that you propose to carry out in Merrimack, New Hampshire area is important to our community. We understand that you are working in partnership with a local community group, Merrimack Citizens for Clean Water, who will assist in community participation. The study requires collecting blood and urine samples from approximately 350 to 1,000 adults, et cetera." So it looks to me that, like, it's asking you to endorse Citizens for Clean Water as our representatives? No? I, I just don't understand.
Well, that's.
Go ahead.
I do understand your concern, and that's the kind of discussion and conversations that we have to have, that as we sit down, and I'll probably work on it too, Barbara.
Yeah, I figure.
That, that it's in a way that all of the members will be comfortable with in terms of signing and approving it, after we verify with the state and all the rest of it. So you're right, I mean, that's something that has to be made clear to all the members, so a determination can be made.
Lud?
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little reluctant to. Yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little reluctant to support the motion, only because I haven't seen word one. I understand you're talking about a grant, I understand you're talking about gathering information, I understand your perceived need to do that. On the other hand, this council is not prepared to tell the citizenry of Merrimack that we are going to send a letter in support of the grant to Dr. Whomever, don't it be you, and go forward. I'm just very, very reluctant to do that at this point. We need to see what it is that we're going to write a letter in support of. Thank you.
My understanding of the motion is that we're going to see that information, and we're actually going to have to get together to vote on whether or not we all agree that it should go forward from there.
It's not automatic.
So the motion is to write the letter and evaluate, and then to get together again, either in a special meeting, or decide not to get together and not send it. But it won't be sent until we've had a special meeting to approve it.
Thank you.
My assumption is that I would send you the RFA, that we would discuss that tonight, and that you would also definitely check with Dr. Chan, who could summarize it quite well, and probably address, we're not conducting the study, you know, but the study is designed to be a community partnering with academic, or could be state DOHs in some states, but there has to be some science piece and some community piece. That's how it's designed. So, but I think you'll be able to scan this RFA and get a good feel for it. It's quite good piece of writing, it really is, so.
Okay. Finley, did you have something?
Actually, I was, I was just, I don't even know if we would decide to meet after doing, I guess, why the motion? If we're going to come back to hammer it out and finalize it, and then have our vote, why the motion now, just so it can be passed on to the grant people, that that's what we're planning on?
The motion doesn't really say we're going to pass it on to the grant people unless people do it because they saw it in the public meeting, that we took a motion to study and evaluate it.
Okay.
But basically, that's what we're doing, is, the motion is to write a letter and evaluate whether or not we want to send the letter.
Okay. I'm good, I guess.
I think that's part of the difficult. This is the problem when it's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
But we were so down to the wire.
How is this motion any different from me suggesting that we put it on the agenda for the 23rd?
Because it provides us time to be able to think about it, ask for information.
It gives us an opportunity to think.
To think. Anything that's on the agenda, we have material.
And as well, it's for the citizenry, most importantly, that they understand what we're going to be doing. And so that's.
That's my discomfort.
And I've been pushing their timeline for weeks, I really have, because I know, I know.
So, if the 23rd is going to be too late, my thought is, we might have to call a special meeting. It should be fairly short, but to try and get that taken care of.
So my question, my question that becomes, noticing requirements on the special meeting?
Only 24 hours, I believe. Okay. Okay. Are we comfortable with this, or do we want to just get the information and evaluate it and decide from there? I mean, we don't have to take a motion, or we don't have to vote on a motion, in my opinion.
Motion.
May I modify the motion to have in it that a vote will be taken by a quorum of the town council about the actual writing, sending of the support letter?
Yes, you may.
You know what I'm saying? So we're saying we're doing this, but let's make it clear that we're not sending, we're not approving of sending a letter. We're sending, we're approving it, and that we're going to have a special meeting to make the approval. Is that clear?
And to review it, yeah.
To make it clear.
The second approved.
Second approved.
Is it, I'm not, I don't do what you do, but could it be, it's confusing. I know it's confusing. If I was listening at home, I'd be going, what are they talking about?
Now you can feel that pain.
So, I don't know if it could be cleaned up a little, but you don't have to listen to me. Maybe you would vote to write a letter of support contingent upon verification of talking with Dr. Chan, contingent upon reading the RFA and it being to your satisfaction, something like that.
And contingent upon a meeting of the quorum.
Yes, yes, and then you have to do your logistics of that.
Which is what we're doing.
Yeah, okay, that's what we said.
Yeah.
It's the laws of the, yeah, I know.
Only.
Mr. Chairman, move the question.
Just, I think Lon's wanting to ask a question. Go ahead.
My question is, a vote yes on the motion obligates us to send a letter?
No. It obligates us to consider writing a letter, and then get together to make a clarifying vote that we're going to send a letter.
Thank you.
Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstaining? So it passes 5-1-0. Oh, yes, correct. With Lon Woods voting in opposition. Okay, that was an interesting public comment. Thank you. So is there anybody else wishing to speak to the council during our public comment session? Seeing none, we'll move on. Resignations and retirements, et cetera. We have unfortunately received a resignation from a member of the planning board. Michael Redding is not able to continue to serve. He's had to miss several meetings due to work and family issues, and he's stepping down. So with regret, I'd like to accept his resignation. If anybody would like to make a motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Nancy. Moved by Bill Boyd. Does anybody have any comments? Bill?
Huge loss, not just for the planning board, for the community, because Michael, when he was active, put in a lot of diligence and time into being a planning board member. Tremendously effective, and certainly, his feedback and participation has had a positive impact on a lot of the growth that we've experienced over the last couple of years. So, very disappointed, I understand, but I wish him nothing but health and happiness with his future.
I would certainly echo that. I worked with Michael for quite a few years on the planning board. He was definitely a good asset to have, knowledgeable and thorough in understanding what he was working with, so he will be missed. We do have a certificate for him, presented to Michael Redding in recognition for his service as a member of the planning board, in recognition of your dedication and commitment to public service during your appointment as a member of the planning board. Your service and devotion to the planning board has had a valuable effect upon this community, and we wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty from June of 2011 to April of 2019, signed by members of the town council. We will send that off to him. Thank you.
Move the vote, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that's a good idea. We take a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 6-0. Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome.
Good job. Moving along, we come to appointments. This is the annual review with the planning board, as a matter of fact, submitted by the planning board chair, Robert Best. Per the Town of Merrimack Charter, Section 6-6, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the planning board. This agenda item is to highlight the board's significant actions, current projects, and anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act upon. Bob, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Koenig. Every time I come here to do this, it always feels weird to be on this side of the room. I don't know if I'll ever get used to that, but thank you for the opportunity to be here. For the record, I'm Bob Best, I'm the chairman of the planning board. It's my privilege to be here on behalf of all of the members of the planning board, our vice chair, Alastair Milnes, Dan Ricker, Neil Anketell, Mike Redding, who just resigned, and you guys had to consider accepting his resignation, and obviously, Tom Koenig, and for many years, and now Bill Boyd, serving us as the council representative. It's really a great bunch of folks that really put in a lot of work for the things that we do, and I really appreciate having such a great group of folks doing it. And as always, I want to make sure to take time to recognize the fantastic staff in the community development department, led by Tim Thompson, and Robert Price, and Kelly Shemel, and the fantastic job, the support that we get from them. Thank you for that. I also know that the planning board members are very interested in and supportive of the trial effort to be a member of the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and try to find out if there's some value that we can receive from some of those services, and communications and tools that are available. So I want to make sure that I convey that to you. Okay, so some of the basics. Since we last met, the planning board had, since I last met with you, the planning board's had 21 meetings. That's from May 1st of 18 up through today. We've conditionally approved 18 site plans and waivers of full site plan review. Conditionally approved 10 subdivisions and lot line adjustments. Some of those were commercial, but there were the five that created new residential building lots, traditional residential building lots. Conditionally approved two conditional use permits, boy, conditional just appears 100 times in these sentences, and among those, that created 45 multifamily affordable housing units, 121 multifamily elderly housing units, 221 conventional multifamily housing units. And so that's the Neighbor Works project, the project on Chamberlain Hill Road, and the project at Premium Outlets Boulevard. And that's kind of the everyday work for the planning board, to undertake people's proposals for their projects, to develop their business, reduce subdivision for residential purposes. The special and extra work that's now underway, just beginning, Tim Thompson's kind of led an effort to take a look at our regulations, which had been traditionally a combined document that was the subdivision and site plan regulations. And without getting kind of too far into the details, there's not a lot in common about reviewing a subdivision and a site plan, they're really two different cats. And so they do belong having separate regulations. Tim's gone through the process of creating a separate document for site plan regulations. We just began the review of the first couple of chapters of that at our meeting a couple days ago. The hope is that we'll have a chance to review that over the next couple of meetings and get that into place. And there's a couple of benefits to doing that. I'm sure that you guys are well tuned in to the requirements of the United States EPA with the MS4 drainage regulations and requirements and all of that. This goes a long way towards preparing us for the future of that, and being compliant with where we need to be from a site plan regulation standpoint. The other is, is probably not the first book on your reading list, but our 2013 master plan, which we've been chugging away with now for six years. This checks off a whole lot of items in that master plan about the way that we're going to approach and look at site plan regulation, kind of down the business district on DW Highway. So it achieves a couple of those things, and that's kind of the big regulatory project for now.
Sure, Eileen, of course.
Sorry, don't mean to interrupt you, but have you gotten together with Kyle to talk about the MS, or has Tim gotten together with Kyle to talk about the MS4 requirements?
I have not. I think that Tim may have, but Kyle?
I think it's very important that they do. You have? Okay, great, thank you.
I'd hope so, because this is, that's all level above me, and I look at that stuff and wonder, what in the world are we being required to do? So I'm kind of counting on the expertise from the people that are in the field. So, I don't have a whole lot for you. I promised you a nice short visit tonight, unless you've got questions for me. That's really what's up from Planning Boardland. We will now, with Mike's resignation, have one vacant full-time position. We've got some vacant alternate positions as well. And there is a candidate in the pipeline for that full-time position, and I don't know if that's necessarily public information yet, but you guys probably are a little aware of it, and certainly will be public for too long, because you have a hearing process to consider, and an interview process that we'll be scheduling. We're always looking for interested people that want to get engaged and do some interesting work, and kind of have a feel for what's going on around town. With that.
Finley?
Bob, I just wondered if this potential new person, is it a new person completely, never participated before?
No, it's a familiar face.
Okay. I get excited when there's a bunch of new folks, not that the old ones are bad.
Oh, one of the things that is on my notes, you'll kind of see over the next handful of weeks, our planning board has staggered three-year terms, so that there's a handful of us up each year. This year, my term, Alastair's term, and Nelson's term are all up. I've spoken with Alastair, and I have no doubt about Nelson, and I can certainly speak for myself that we would all submit our names for consideration for reappointment, and welcome the opportunity to continue to serve if it's the will of the council to give us that privilege. But what a big year, you got some of the longstanding members there, all at one time to consider.
Amazing. Bill, did you have something?
No.
Oh, okay. Anybody else have questions for Bob at this point?
Have a nice day.
You're close to being.
You get off easy.
Thank you very much.
Bob, thank you.
Ron? No, you guys.
Thanks for your efforts, Bob, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for saying so. I'm glad to do it. I think it's, I just love being involved in civics and what's going on in town, and this is my little corner of it, so.
You and the boys do a good job. And Lynn, sorry.
Yes.
Going to get in trouble with that one.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay. We have no public hearing. Legislative updates from state reps? Seeing none?
They're all conquered still.
Well, good place for them to be, getting their jobs done, I'm sure. Town managers report.
Okay. On Saturday, April 27th, Parks and Recreation held their second annual cleanup, Community Cleanup Day, and had 14 groups come out on a cold and rainy Saturday to clean up 12 different parks and conservation areas in Merrimack. Yeah. The, I don't know if Kyle has any information about the amount of trash and things that they, you know, okay, I didn't think to do. Yesterday, May 8th, marked Town Clerk, Tax Collector Diane Trippett's 30th anniversary with the Town of Merrimack.
She started when she was 10?
Yes, had to be. Had to be. Okay, so, wanted to let you know about some traffic issue, some traffic issues that you will need to be aware of on DW Highway. The Merrimack Village District will be working on the town water system. The water main will be shut down from Priscilla Lane to Bedford Town Line along DW Highway. The shutdown is scheduled for approximately 11:00 PM on Saturday night to May 11th for four to eight hours. They are tying together the 16-inch that's on one side, and the 12-inch lines running along the east and west sides of the highway for redundancy. MVD will be feeding the shutdown section of Merrimack, this is not right, written correctly, but the water will not be shut off. So it's, we've gotten into this whole thing here, that's, will be provided water from Bedford to accommodate that. The water, people may find that their water pressure is a little lower, but there will be water, because the fire department can't function without water for that period of time, for fire protection. So I just want to tell you this from a, what's going on on DW Highway on the May 11th is the connecting of the water lines.
And that's May 11th in the evening?
May 11th for, starting at 11:00 PM, yes.
Hopefully, traffic won't be affected.
Yes.
Is your mic on? I put it on, and it must not have hit the button right, I apologize. They were, at Priscilla Lane, they were cut into DW Highway, and I can't remember, I think it was like 4:30 in the evening, which of course would be the worst of times. I don't know if you knew that, if that was an emergency, that they had to do that, otherwise it would be nice, especially that section of road, if they could keep it cleared after probably 3 o'clock in the afternoon, because it's difficult without that. And it was backed up even on the airport access. And it was backed up even on the airport access road. And so, so I don't know if, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, I didn't know if it was an emergency, where they had to have it open at that point or not, so.
You know Kyle? Okay.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it's the DOT that's overseeing that aspect, because it's outside of the urban compact.
Of course.
But...
Might explain it then.
It might.
Explains a lot.
But what they're doing is, just for your information, is they are creating a redundancy by taking, as I said, taking the, connecting the two pipes, the two water mains from one side to the other, so that there's a redundancy there that doesn't exist right now. So, it's to serve flatly, but it also does a lot for that area of town as it relates to water.
And I'm all, that's all great, I just, I was just thinking about, you know, the location in particular and time of day.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but I'll find out.
Any other questions of the town manager?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move along. We have no consent agenda for tonight, we have no old business for tonight. Moving into new business, first item on the agenda is National Public Works Week proclamation submitted by Public Works Director Kyle Fox. Town Council to designate the week of May 9th through the 25th, excuse me, May 19th through the 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week. And we have a proclamation here that we can sign, if everybody's happy with it. Says, "National Public Works Week proclamation, May 19th to 25th, 2019, it starts here," in quotes. "Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Merrimack, New Hampshire." And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And, excuse me, whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Merrimack, New Hampshire to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association, be it now resolved, we, the Merrimack Town Council, do hereby designate the week, May 19th to 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week. We urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. And witness whereof we have hereon to set the seal of the town of Merrimack to be affixed on this ninth day of May 2019. So moved. Moved by Bill, segmented by Barb. Anybody have any comments they want to make?
I, it is amazing what public works departments get accomplished, because it seems like one little thing, depending on the time of year, sometimes we only think it's plowing and then, you know, but it is very encompassing, and so we do appreciate the efforts, especially in our community of what our public works department does.
Absolutely.
Well said.
Anybody else? And I echo that as well, that they do a great job and we really appreciate the work they are doing all year round. Like called a question? All those in favor of the proclamation signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? So it passes 6-0-0. Next on the agenda is the wastewater treatment facility LED lighting upgrade submitted by Finance Director, Assistant Town Manager Paul McCauley. Town Council to review and consider the recommended options to move forward with the wastewater treatment facility's lighting upgrade slash retrofit project budgeted for $48,000 in the 1819 budget. And it's up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Town Council, for letting me discuss this with you tonight while the system comes up online. Just want to give you a little update, is that we, meaning the town of Merrimack, Kyle's group, DPW, had the opportunity to sit on the highway garage and listen to the benefits of LED lighting. And by doing that, Kyle took that back to his department and said, "Okay, how could we help reduce our carbon footprint and go more LED?" We also, if you remember, two years ago, we did a big streetlight upgrade. And as you'll see in the financial presentation, the savings that we're getting from those LED lights is significant. We cut our kilowatt hours from 230,000 as of March 2017 to 90,000 in March 2019. So, the project is significantly reducing the kilowatts that we are using in the streetlights. Traffic lights, as you'll also see, stealing Tom's thunder here, but in that presentation, you'll also see the traffic lights has been flatlined from five or six years ago, and we have churned over from LEDs, and we reduced that footprint as well in that usage. So there are significant savings by going to LEDs. During this project, the wastewater treatment plant went out and called EverSource and said, "Hey, we'd like lighting, could you check us out for upgrading to LED lighting?" And they came out and did a free, brought an engineer in and did a free overview of all the facility down at the wastewater plant. So, I'm not going to bore you with the difference between a common 60-watt bulb versus a 14-watt bulb versus a Philips 12.5-watt bulb, but the big thing is that if you look at all of those three bulbs, the 60-watt, the 14-watt, and the 12.5-watt all have 800 lumens. And as you can see, the 60-watt bulb lasts about 1,200 hours, while the 12.5 Philips bulb lasts about 25,000 hours. So not only are you getting LED savings with this, but you're not having to replace these bulbs in a short amount of time, especially at some of the plant down at wastewater, where some of the lights are on 24/7. As was stated, the budget, wastewater put in the budget in the 1819 budget, about $48,000 for a lighting retrofit upgrade. EverSource completing their lighting audit with the, for the project using their consultant engineer, there's about 325 fixtures in all the buildings that would have to be replaced. Came back with a total cost of replacing those fixtures about $69,000.
Paul, is that fixture replacement, replacement or bulb replacement?
A little bit of everything. There's some retrofitting for some of the fluorescent lights that they can do, there's some bulb replacements, and then there's some fixture replacements. The engineer looked at all the options and made determinations of which bulbs he would be replacing, which fixtures he would be replacing, cost efficiency for them.
Thank you.
So, $16,000 is a little bit more than the 48, however, EverSource is using, has incentives, and there's a lot of incentives, we found out in talking to EverSource for projects with these LED projects. They're offering $17,000 incentive, so that would reduce the net cost of $52,000, which would be about $4,000 over budget. It will reduce what they're projecting about 195,000, almost 196,000 kilowatts at the facility, saving about $14,000 in electricity. They were coming in with higher savings, but they were using what EverSource charges, which is about 10 and 1/2 cents per kilowatt. The town is on a fixed contract until November of 2020 for kilowatt usage through a third party at 7.2 cents. So that's why it's $14,000 versus what EverSource was thinking. And we figure the payback roughly is about 3.7 years. In projects like this, anything under five years is a thumbs up for EverSource, it's a very good return on investment. EverSource, when we sat down, we, actually Sarita, myself, and Kyle sat down with EverSource and the engineer and talked to them, and we said, "Okay, after this, if we implement it, what are our options?" They said, "We can hire an electrician to do this project," because being, just coming out of the highway garage, we kind of had a feel for an electrician or two that could do something like this. But wastewater would have to be the clerk of the works. We could hire an electrician and a clerk of the works, meaning we'd have a longer payback period. Or we could hire a full-service contractor who would oversee the whole project, who would oversee the electrician, and still have that same payback period, that 3.7 is including this option of hiring a full-service contractor. One of the reasons why we thought a full-service contractor, I was leery to hire a full-service contractor, but after talking to them, one of the reasons why is, as we felt more comfortable talking to this gentleman, is because he understood the needs, he understood, and just hearing him talk to EverSource in their language to get the most of our rebate, and if we change something out, they're being able to talk to EverSource to get either more money for a more efficient product, so if we need be. So, I would recommend the full-service contractor, seeing, that's the main reason, but also, I don't like the finger pointing. When we do some of these projects, it's especially something like this, it's not the fixture, it's the electrician, the electrician goes back in, comes back, no, it's not me, it's the fixture, and you're six months later still pointing figures. With a full-service contractor, there's no finger pointing, if the fixture doesn't work, he brings his electrician in, if it's an electrical problem, they fix it, if it's a fixture problem, they get a new fixture right away. Also, as you are aware, wastewater staffing has been very difficult sometimes to hire some mechanics in the maintenance area. So the staffing, we'd have to dedicate a person to watch these electricians and these people implementing it, this will, for a dedicated staff, this will allow the dedicated staff to actually do work on maintaining the plant. EverSource, they gave us the name of a contractor, we, like I said, we did meet with the contractor. This option, I believe, is the most beneficial for the town. It's a turnkey lighting upgrade, it's what I talked about, they'll bring in licensed electricians, there'll be weekly updates. When you're doing these LED projects, you gotta basically break everything apart as well. So, if you got, you gotta take the light bulbs out, put that in a certain carton, wrap that up, make sure you send it to a special area. You gotta take the fixture out, wrap that up, put it there, but you gotta break the fixture down. So if there's a ballast in the fixture, you gotta take the ballast out, that gets put into a different box. So there's a lot of nuances that go along with some of these projects, especially in a plant this size with equipment that's 35, 40 years old. So there's a lot of different boxes, and they will handle all of that, make sure it goes to the proper, detail it, write it down, make sure EverSource gets all the reports they need, and separate the hazardous versus the non-hazardous material, so that we're in compliance with the EverSource rebates. Warranties are, the ballast and controls are five years, the lamps themselves are three to five-year payback, depending on the lamp, the fixtures are a five to 10-year, depending on the fixture, labor is 90-day, and labor, workmanship is one year. Any questions? I guess what I'm asking for is that the council, bringing this forward to the council to show that we are doing things, and to the townspeople to show them that we are trying to reduce our carbon footprint, and that we are trying to do some of these projects, and some of these projects are definitely beneficial for the initial cost.
Very good. Barbara?
Paul, what is the timeframe for the work to be done? And will it interfere with the other work the wastewater treatment plant's planning on?
No, we have not, the contract doesn't have us penciled in, but Kyle might be able to talk to you about the time, but when he was talking to us, it's a quick, it's, they're going to be in and out, it's a couple-week job, so it would be done before the other work started, because that other work is still a year out, this will be done over the summer into the fall.
Paul nailed it.
What he said.
Exactly, it'll be done this summer.
So Kyle, the, part of the upgrades involves electrical rework, right? I mean, is that going to interfere, are these going to both be doing the same kind of thing?
They won't be. The bulk of the electrical work that's going to be in the Phase 3 upgrade is the alert, the subcode electrical for the pumps, the machines, and all of the big heavy equipment. The electrical for the lighting is fine, so we, this isn't duplication of work.
Okay, and it's not an interference either?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Cool, thank you. Any other questions, especially while Kyle is here?
He isn't moving.
It, well, I mean, Eileen?
So, as far as the numbers are concerned, there are, you said that it's going to be $62,000 with a $17,000, something like that, right?
69 with a 17.
Okay, so, what are the costs? I'm not seeing where the cost for the contracted services or the warranty are in that number, I'm not sure which is which.
That $69,000 was a fully loaded number to include the gentleman's installation, that warranties and all that.
Oh, I know, but I was just wondering if you happen to have the breakdown of that?
No, he gave us one, a bid for, on some bid, on that, yes.
Okay, and then there's rebates from BSNH and savings in electricity that will cover the remainder of the amount that we did, we only budgeted 48.
We only budgeted 48, they, as I told you, with their shortage in staff, they have some staffing savings for this year to cover that. And they have some other electrical savings in the plant, but there is enough money in that fund without hurting and taking more money out of the fund balance. As you know, or for the people at home, wastewater is an enterprise fund, so basically they're self-sufficient, it's like a mini-company, they have their own profit and loss with budget and revenues, so by looking at it, it will not affect the bottom-line number of fund balance, it will be all handled within that, we're not going to use any fund balance to pay that off. Okay, $4,000.
I would also, if I could, just real quickly, we've done these kind of upgrades, certainly at the highway garage most recently, but we did it at the transfer station a couple of years ago. In addition to the monetary savings, the lighting is so much better for the employees to work in, it's safer, they can see what they're doing better, I mean, it's, the LED lights are just a wonderful thing in every aspect, so.
And I wasn't a true believer in the LED product when it first came out, I was very hesitant to move on to this, but seeing the lighting at the highway garage, Finley can attest to this, you walk in and it doesn't even look any really different than having the camera lights on us.
It's like a surgical theater, it's so brightly.
It's a lot brighter and they're using a lot less, you know, and those are turned down. You know, a lot of them are turned down to 60 or even, not to get into it, but 60 or 55% of the total wattage that can be produced, and they're still very bright in those facilities.
In the memo that we came in our packet here and spoke about the incinerator building, what do we use that building for?
The incinerator building is storage, but it has those fluorescent lights, so we would like to get them out, because some of those have to stay on 24/7.
Yep.
And they're very hard to change, because you gotta get up in the air to change them, so we're looking to get those, they're going to come in and change those out, so.
Perfect.
I think the point was that he wanted to make sure that we weren't incinerating anything.
Actually, I know we've never used the incinerator, so I didn't realize the building was large enough, so I was just curious.
Cool. Bill, you had a question?
Yeah. Are there any other buildings in town that are in the pipeline that need to be, fixtures that need to be replaced or retrofitted?
Council boy just stole my thunder. Actually, I was, we are talking to EverSource right now to do a study on the east and west wings of Town Hall, the MYA building, Central Fire Station, we're having them, the audit is free.
That's right.
So, we're trying to look at those things. We're holding off on the police station and South Fire Station, because, as you know, we just started to look at the safety complex this week, so we don't want to put money in if we're not going to keep those buildings around. To have a conversation, actually I have reached out to that, we've been passing like ships in the night, not to touch base, but also for the library, I believe. in the night, not to touch base, but also for the library, I believe, to look into it if they have not. What we were told by EverSource is, gentlemen, is they have money for municipal upgrades in this project. And it was very interesting when we were talking to them, get off topic a little bit, is that we replaced the motor in a piece of equipment. And I just threw that out there jokingly when we were in the meeting. He goes, send us in, see what we can get. And we actually got money, a rebate.
$1,400.
$1,400 for replacing that motor. So now that we know these things, it's not very publicized, so don't write this on paper now. But we are, we are starting to.
Till we're done.
Yeah. We are starting to look at a lot of different things. And yes, Council boy, there are other buildings that we are looking at to see if it's cost-effective to do these kinda lighting upgrades in, in the facilities that we know. And when, when Deputy Finance Director Bowlin gets up here to discuss the, we have a slide based on kilowatts, and we're hoping to reduce some of that, not only our carbon footprint for some of our kilowatt uses.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you need a motion, or just?
We oughta have a motion to urge them to, to proceed, I guess.
Approve the recommended, approve the recommended options? Is that what you need?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommended options to move forward with the wastewater treatment facility's lighting upgrade retrofit project, budgeted for $48,000 in the 18, 19 budget.
Second.
And just a friendly amendment, and have the town manager or her designate.
That, true.
Sign of all necessary paperwork.
Attend.
And we don't know what to do without Bill, you know?
I'm silent now.
You have the hat tied, Bill?
I, I don't have the urge anymore.
Did we get a second for that? Lon, seconding that. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Eileen?
I just wanna say, very good job, Paul, and to Kyle and Sarita for initiating this. It's a very good thing that you did, and another one of those things that wasn't even on the list, but we just really appreciate the, the good work and the extra effort given, because this is a very beneficial project in, in so many ways. So thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Sarita definitely took this charge on.
I'm not Sarita.
I said, no, I said Sarita definitely.
She was saying thank you to Sarita. He was, anyways. Yes, we very much appreciate it, and hopefully the vote of the council will show that. If there's no other questions, we'll call, call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining? That passes 6-0-0. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
And thanks Sarita and Kyle, and everybody at the wastewater, and their mothers and grandmothers. Anyway. And their dogs. Okay. Next on our agenda is the State Revolving Fund wastewater treatment plant Phase 2 upgrade, Phase 3 upgrades. Town council will consider authorizing the town manager to apply for and sign the required paperwork related to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Water Division's State Revolving Fund for funding for the wastewater treatment facility Phase 3 upgrade, which was approved by the voters at the 2019 Merrimack Annual Town Meeting. Paul, you're back up again.
Let me just say something. I, I'm not sure that you really need to have any further things on this, but it's basically just, you are giving me authority to sign on your behalf, because they, they require, they'll need the minutes that authorized me to sign, and then I can sign. So it just goes in with the application.
Okay. And that's our normal mode of procedure, is to have you be responsible for those things. We like that, especially if I have to come in and sign. So if there are no other questions, there's a motion actually offered in the packet, if someone wants to offer that motion.
Who does it offer?
You gotta read it into the record.
Gotta read it.
Somebody's gotta do it besides me. Please.
Motion to authorize, motion to authorize the town manager to apply for and sign required paperwork related to the New Hampshire, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Water Division State Revolving Fund for funding the wastewater treatment facility Phase 3 upgrade, which were approved by the voters at the 2019 Merrimack Annual Town Meeting.
Second. Motion by Lon, and seconded by Nancy. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? That passes 6-0-0. We're going to put off the MYA audit for a minute, because they've let us know that they were gonna be late getting here, and we'd prefer to have them show up before we do that, if that's okay with the council.
Makes it easier.
So we'll postpone that, either until the end of the meeting or until they show up, whichever comes first. That brings us to number five, the proposal to simplify the process for food trucks, submitted by Town Councilor Barb Healy. Barb, did you wanna?
Yeah, just table it for now, please.
Withdraw that for now, okay.
Do you wanna do a date certain, or just?
No, just table.
We'll just, we'll pick that back up after we've had a chance to do a little more review on it and understand.
Exactly. Town manager cabinet was good enough to have one of the staff outreach to different areas and come up with some more research, and I'd like to have that opportunity to look at it again as well.
Okay. So we'll. Eileen?
I think that it was, it was very difficult for Barbara or anybody who would want to gather that information, because for the city of Manchester, for instance, the information seemed to be picked all over the place, and you might pick one, and you, you missed the other one. So there's so many departments that it goes through. So, you know, we found, as did Barbara, that there was, there's a lot more to it than we thought.
I found, working with the city of Manchester recently, that there are a lot of places one has to deal with, spread all over the city even, so. I appreciate you and Becky working on that, and we'll follow up on a future date. Moving along, that brings us to the, why don't we swap down to seven, if the council doesn't mind, and bring in the third quarter financial review?
No objection.
There's no objections, none. So I understand Assistant Finance Director Tom Bolton is gonna present for us.
I figured you guys would get sick of my voice after a while.
After his IT guy fixes things for him.
I need a piece of paper.
Bowlin, thank you. Tom Bowlin. Tom's gonna present tonight.
Yeah. We decided to give you a new voice tonight, to change things up.
We could use that. Sorry.
I can assure you, it's not 'cause Paul's tired of talking, but I just thought it would be good for a change.
He just didn't wanna fall out of his chair again.
Right.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm gonna start with the, the bottom line, which is that we're in very good shape in terms of both appropriations and revenue through the first three quarters of the fiscal year compared to our budgeted projections. We do project that we will have sufficient appropriations to cover the planned operations of the town through the end of the fiscal year. If anything, we may end up with a surplus in appropriations, which would be largely the result of some savings in salaries and wages. I think, as you all are aware, in thus far in fiscal 18, 19, we've had a number of retirements, as well as some turnover in, in some departments. And while that creates some operational challenges to hire and train new personnel, it does create some cost savings for the town as those positions go unfilled for a short period of time during that transition period. So that's what we've experienced, and there should be some, some overall net savings as a result. Looking at some of the other major categories of appropriations, health insurance, that's one we always like to look at, and as you can see, over the last few years, we did have a downtick in the health insurance costs when we restructured the programs and went to the, the, the high deductible plans three years ago. Since then, the premium costs have been increasing. We're up about 8% overall through the first nine months of the fiscal year. But the good news is, that was what we expected, and in fact, we're actually running a little bit below budget as a result of the, the same thing, the retirements and the, the turnover that, that results in salary and related savings during the period. It's a similar story with New Hampshire retirement costs. You can see that the retirement contributions that the town has to make have been increasing as a result of some staffing level increases that have been enacted in the last couple of years, as well as salary increases overall for the personnel. But these were expected and budgeted for, and are running in line, if anything, slightly below budget for the year.
So can you just briefly point out why the police was flat last year and jumped as much as it did this year? Is that because of staffing, adding people, or?
That would be as a result of, of staffing increases, correct?
Okay.
The additional hires in, in that department. We're seeing the full, full year effect of that.
All right. As you know, you authorized a couple of new positions for the Special Investigation Unit. They've been filled. Last year, some of the, we had a big turnover at the beginning of last year, where we had significant number of, meaning 17, 18, we had a significant number of openings in police. Those were filled this year, and that's why we're seeing a little bit of the spike. They were budgeted for, now they're filled, and we're moving forward. Yes, Eileen?
Yep. Just one, one other thing, as you recall, you also, we reduced the amount of overtime in the police department budget this year, because you, you gave them more for the Special Investigation Unit, so that they could be backfilled while we were hiring new people and all that kinda thing. So there was some extra overtime in there, too, quite a bit extra.
Yep. I'm sure we'll see that really soon. Thank you.
Right. That is the next, the next area of discussion is overtime. And overtime charges are down in almost all departments across the town compared to the prior fiscal year. The biggest one that you can see on, on the chart that's currently up on the screen is the, the Fire Department. And those were expected declines in overtime as a result of the additional staffing that was, that was allocated to their department. And they are managing that in line with, with the budget in the current fiscal year. This is still overtime, but it focuses on areas other than the Fire Department. You can see that police is down compared to the prior year, although it's still running high compared to several of the years prior to that, and that is as a result of the additional overtime allotted to the Special Investigation Unit. Overtime in the Highway Department is, is usually a function of the, the number and severity of the winter storms that we get. And while we didn't have a, a ton of snow in this past winter, we did have a number of storms that were very long in nature and included a lot of ice, so they did incur overtime, although not to the levels that we had seen in the, in the two years prior to that. And, and their numbers are, are running, tracking fine with the, with the budgetary estimations. Solid Waste is really the only department where the, the overtime through the first nine months and what we see for the full fiscal year will probably be higher than what we had budgeted, and that's strictly a function of turnover in that department. So there will be savings in the wage and salaries lines that will more than offset the, the overtime.
So you're expecting an increase in, in overtime through the summer because of their late hours on Thursday, or?
Um, no, I mean, the, the late hours on Thursdays, we've been doing that for the, the past.
I know, but does that increase the overtime in that, in this last quarter, or something? Right now, they're running less than last year, but you said you expect.
It's less than last year, but it's more than what we had budgeted for.
Oh, is it? Okay.
And that's a result of turnover in the department.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, right now, we have a staffing, so we had a resignation beginning of April, that we've been filling shifts on Saturday with overtime. So we feel that, looking at it, is that the overtime will be, will be increasing. So not only with, we budget for the increased hours, but because of the staffing shortage that we have, when we have to fill on weekends with overtime, our busy times, that that overtime will be a little bit higher than.
Okay.
It's showing now.
All right, thanks.
Okay. This just gives you a, a little bit better look at overtime in general government and the other departments in the town, because on the other scales, they kinda weren't even really a blip on, on the radar. But this just blows those up. But again, the, the story is the same, overtime is, is down compared to the prior years and, and tracking with our budget.
Okay, great.
In terms of electrical use, which we, we talked about, or Paul talked about a little bit previously, electrical usage in terms of kilowatts used by our various departments are mostly up compared to the prior years, with the notable exception of streetlights and traffic lights, which is the LED discussion that, that you guys have already undertaken. I think this slide kinda highlights what the, the potential might be to look at similar kinda projects for other buildings in the, in the various departments in town.
So are we seeing a trend in increased usage, or at least in Fire Department and stuff? Is it?
Um.
This is usage and not cost, right?
Correct. Yeah, as Paul stated, our, our cost is, is fixed in terms of our per-kilowatt charges for the next few years, or a couple of years at least. But it does seem as though there, it's consistently higher use in the prior year. You're gonna see that when we get to the next slide, when we talk about natural gas as well, and I think, near as we can tell, a lot of it is the function of, we had a colder winter. We didn't have a lot of snow, but it got cold early, and stayed cold later. And, and I think that is what is driving some of the increases that we're seeing in, in electrical use.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And as promised, here is the natural gas situation in terms of our, our therm usage throughout the different departments. And again, consistently higher as a result of the, the colder temperatures. I would point out that the increase in Highway is a little bit misleading in that they were, they had two buildings for most of this winter. They were heating the, the original garage where people were still working, and then heating the new garage during the construction period. So that's a little bit of a skewed number as a, as a result of that.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any questions? Barbara?
So, like the electrical, this is really on what they are using for heat, not the cost associated with it.
Correct.
So like you said, I can see why Highway would be up, because now they've got two buildings, huge buildings to heat. I can see kinda why Fire might be, 'cause they've already, you know, they're opening those doors a lot, but it just seems like it's such a huge jump over last year. So it makes me wonder, what are they doing down there? And, you know, all of the other departments, you're seeing increases in as well. And so do we have things like setback thermometers? And so do we have things like setback thermometers, et cetera, to help control some of the off-hour usage?
Paul, you could probably answer that better than I.
Yes, we have a policy in Town Hall that we have to throw, throw back the thermostats to sixty-five in a room that's not being used. Part of the jump in fire that you mentioned, we looked, and it was really across all three buildings, but it was significantly higher down in the Reed's Ferry area, Station Three, and that's because of what we've initially took up with weather stripping and issues with insulation and some of those things that, when we discussed it, we feel that could be a problem with, why it's up. The other thing, as you mentioned, it was colder, the guys were out, they come back in in fire, and they're a little cold, and they keep the heat a little bit higher, and we're running, you know, radiant heat and gas burners in the, to keep the trucks from not freezing, the water in the trucks not freezing. So even though we're only heating to fifty-five, with those big doors, those doors aren't energy efficient.
Right.
So we're thinking there's a lot more usage of those heaters, that's why the therms were up over there, because we, like we did say, we saw an increase in every one of the buildings. It wasn't just, we couldn't point to one building and say, that's the building, it was up in all three of the buildings. But yes, we do have a energy policy, and we do throw back the thermostats. And hopefully, now that we did that new heating project in Town Hall next year, we'll see a little therm coming back down.
Fire department's a twenty-four-seven operation, so there's probably not much setback there.
Correct, and so is the police department, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, that kind of covered the appropriation side of it. Just quickly on revenues. Obviously, the biggest non-property tax revenue is our auto registrations. It's a number we always keep a close eye on. Looks like we are going to be just about right on target with our $5.2 million budgetary estimate for auto registrations for the current fiscal year. So things are looking, looking good there. We've also on track in terms of building permits, a little ahead of the game, as we continue to experience a favorable economic climate that drives those numbers. In addition to the interest on the town's cash reserves, cash balances, we've seen, up until the last couple of months, we'd seen a steady rise in interest rates that we've been able to obtain on our cash balances with all of the banks that we use. The, we're in a good position, you know, Paul and I, I've talked to a number of other different finance directors in other towns, and not everybody's quite as fortunate as we are. Having a strong fund balance position really has enabled us to get some very competitive rates on the cash that we have available.
And I would just like to personally thank you, because it's you that have, as the treasurer, are now going out and doing a lot of actively seeking these rates. And I, their rates, I know the rates are low, but they're not in the point-five range anymore, you're in the two percents, and it takes some doing to get that. So I congratulate you personally.
Thank you. We are averaging a little under two and a half percent at this point, which, you know, doesn't sound like a lot, but as Eileen mentioned, compared to what we had been getting in the prior fiscal years, it's a nice boost to the revenue line.
It's nice to see that line up a little bit, at least.
Exactly.
Paul?
And one other thing with, the council deserves some of the credit as well, to change us over to an appointed position, but I appreciate it, because now I have a full-time staff member where I can go in there and ask, or better yet, the other way around. A full-time staff member comes and says to me, hey, this bank's giving us 1.9%, we're getting 2.4%. Talk to them, match, match or get out. And that's what really Tom's been doing a lot of the time. He's looking at the rate, if they're not matching, or if they're not close, go, get out. And it also helps that our main bank has been leading the way a lot with this stuff, and we have some new banks in town that have been very nice, competitive with it, and actually have been pushing some of the other banks to get competitive. And we have walked away from businesses that we've been doing business for thirty years, because they won't meet the rate. We keep a little money in there, but we pull and close, so. But no, having a full-time appointed treasurer in a town of this size has really worked wonders, as you can see with just having that extra, that extra money paid for the salary a hundred times over, almost. So that's a good thing.
No comment.
You don't get a percentage, though.
Nope. That was all I had, if there are any other questions?
Any other questions for Tom at this point?
No.
It's good to hear that we're doing well. Thank you for the update, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Or you could do that, too. So we did this one. So seeing the MYA here, we can go back to number four, the MYA Audit Financial Discussion. It was brought forward by Eileen and Paul, Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager, Town Council to review the town's current contract with the MYA that is due to expire on June thirtieth, and consider the recommendation that the MYA hire a part-time bookkeeper. Paul, do you want to take this one? You guys are welcome to come up and...
Holly is the treasurer for the MYA, and Brian is the president of the MYA, current president of the MYA. I've been talking to Holly on and off since November first about the audit and discussing the audit with them. It appears that the MYA is an organization with about $500,000 going through it now, each year, several different programs, you know, from wrestling to lacrosse, to baseball, to basketball, to soccer. Soccer's their biggest program, as you know, through the budget process. With that, they're a volunteer organization, so they have volunteer treasurers in these departments. Holly is very dedicated, and not to say these volunteers aren't also dedicated, but I know Holly is also having a hard time getting some of the information she needs from them. In talking with the auditors, they have told me that the internal controls are great on paper. However, some of the treasurers of the organizations are not following them 100%. That threw up a red flag to me a little bit, and personally, it's not a dig on Holly. Like I said, Holly's been very diligent. She tells me, Paul, I'm trying, I'm trying to try. This year's audit was, I touched base with her in January, they needed a couple bits of information from, from a program, we'll name anonymous, but the treasurer in that program worked during, as a tax accountant during the season. And basically, she told Holly, I'm busy, I can't get to it. So that delayed it until after April fifteenth. After April fifteenth, they got the information back to the auditors. At that time, that was the letter that Eileen sent to them, saying, hey, we need the audit, it's been almost nine months now. It's definitely been, March thirty-first was nine months after fiscal year end, but we definitely need the audit, and please can we get it? And that led to the letter Eileen sent out, saying, hey, you're not in compliance. We've been holding the money. However, if I could make a recommendation, and I know the MYA will have to think about this and maybe change their bylaws, is that it might be time to hire a bookkeeper slash treasurer to handle all this operations, so that all the money is being accounted for, not that it's not being accounted for now, but all the money can be accounted for in a certain way, and the programs, each program will be treated the same, and you're not having five or six different people who are volunteers trying to handle money and saying, oh, I'll get to that deposit, or I'll get to that, making that payment, when I'm freed up, or after the, after the game, or things of that sort. There's some logistics to work out with it. I have talked to several accounting firms, because I didn't want to throw something out like this and not understand the full ramifications. There are some ramifications with it, but I think with the right management slash incentive to put it in place, the programs will not see a difference. They'll actually probably get reports and other things in a more timely manner, because there'll be one person handling all of this. I believe Holly and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, that your bylaws state you cannot have a position, which in this case, it might not be a position, but a consultant or contractor.
Contractor, just like the auditor.
Yeah, just like your auditor.
You hire an auditor, and maybe you hire somebody as a bookkeeper to come in on a contract basis, a couple of hours a month or something.
Right.
I don't know that it would really take an awful lot. And, you know, from, from the town's perspective, again, we appreciate everything that you do, and you're not volunteering to count beans. You're volunteering because you love the kids and you love the sports. So, you know, we, it just seems, since there's so much money and so many different pieces and parts, that it takes away from your ability to do what you're really volunteering for.
And like I said, it's not, for Holly not trying, she has tried and tried and tried to get these reports done. This is their third auditing firm, and all three auditing firms have said basically the same thing, is that it's not at the executive board level, it's down to the program level. And to have a $500,000 organization where the town supports it by $72,000, to have volunteers in a key position like a treasurer, might be something that needs to be looked at in the future. I haven't seen this year's audit report. I know that they talked to you today, and I know they got some findings, Holly, that were similar to what I'm discussing, so none of this is a shock to you. I think we even talked about it a little bit as well.
Right.
So, so, but I'm at kind of a hard, rocking a hard place here. I know what they're trying to do. The contract says we're supposed to have the audit by November first. I've been withholding the payments since November. The audit usually comes in around April first, usually, in understanding the nature of the beast. But that's why I had Eileen send out the letter, and that's why we decided to bring this to the council for your information. This is also a contract year, so the contract ends on June thirtieth, so it might be something the council might want to think about as well.
Eileen?
Just, I'm sorry, just one more thing. I just wanted to say that the, as far as the audit is concerned, it's really just a piece of paper, once they get all the things in, because it's a qualified opinion, so it's really kind of like just a compilation and with no opinion on it, so, because the internal controls aren't being followed. So anyway, so even if you get the audit, it doesn't really mean anything.
Right, exactly. It's not. But I could share, you know, I think that...
It is.
It is on, yeah. So, you know, I, I'm actually disappointed, because I have worked really hard, and I really wanted, I was hoping this year would be better. I feel like the auditor has a better understanding of our organization and how we run it, but I have known for a while that we need one person, but what I was trying to figure out was how much time is really involved for this one person to take it on. I was gonna do it, volunteering, but, but work has gotten busier for me, and I am in the accounting industry, so I have audits and year-end stuff that I do, but our year-end is different, so that's one good thing. But I think it's definitely a part-time job. I don't know that it's a few hours, because when each program is in season, they have refs that they pay and stuff that goes out, you know, on a consistent basis. So I think that it's a part-time job, and I, I think that it's more, the programs are trying to do what they need to do, but I think that the treasurer position is just some Joe. They don't have that accounting background to understand sometimes when I try to explain to them why we need and why we do what we do, because I think you have to have the buy-in. So if people understand why they need it, then they're gonna, they're gonna want it more than if you're just telling them that they have to have it. So I think that everyone's trying to do it, but I think the turnover is high, too, in this position, every year. So I know there's, sometimes there's some falloff where the new treasurer comes in and the old treasurer leaves, there's that kind of month of lull paperwork that sometimes I don't get right away, or that sort of thing. So I think that they're trying, and they're, you know, I can't believe that we've run the program the way that we have with all this money going through it successfully. It's great that we have volunteers that are stepping up, but I just think that with seven hands in the pot, it's just not a good idea. And I think that's why our audit really just comes back all the time, because you have seven treasures, and it's hard to keep control over all of them, and they all have their own sense of their finances. So that's kind of how they run it, is how they would run their own home finances, and I keep trying to tell them, it's a business that we're running, either, even though it's, we're all volunteers, it's still a business, and if you go to your company, this is how they work, so that's really how you have to treat it. So it's been, it's been tough, but, you know, I really, over time, have said that it definitely needs, not a full-time, but, you know, definitely someone part-time who looks at it. We really have a profit and loss statement, we don't have a balance sheet, and we should, because we do have things that we own and we do have, but that's one of the things, too, is it's really, they think of it as a cash basis, cash in, cash out, they expense everything, and nothing really is looked at in, you know, as an executive board kind of treasurer. So I know that that was one of the things that they had looked at, too, which isn't a bad thing, but we do have stuff that we own, and we just have to look at things differently, and people are just not being consistent is really the biggest thing. I think what an office expense, someone else may think it's a different kind of expense, so we can't look at everything over the years and trend, because people are putting stuff in different buckets. So that's our biggest.
And Holly has made some great strides. She brought up the financial software they're using, QuickBooks.
Right, yep.
She's consolidated from having twelve different bank accounts down to three or four. So she has done it, I think, the next step. That's why I come to the council suggesting this is, I think this is the next step, because really, we thought last year, things would take a turn on the audit and move in a different way, but it seems that because of having these seven different volunteers, as she said, doing things differently, it has created a problem for the MYA and to get their audit done.
Okay. Nancy, did you have a question?
Yes, Paul, are you suggesting that we make the part-time treasurer position part of the contract come June? And basically, we're allowing the MYA to know now that that's what's going to be coming in, so they can be looking for it?
Yes.
If that's your intention?
That's my intention. Don't want to blindside anyone.
I understand.
No.
But it sounds like you're not, you...
I do want it, I don't know why you say we have to go look for someone. I was like, well, that's why I've been mulling it over, like, is it really a full-time position? Is it a part-time position? You know?
Just think, you won't have to be the one to haunt them.
Right?
That must be horrible.
I do feel like a nag.
Because you're like the people, and they do volunteer, and you don't, I mean, they're putting in all this time, now you have to haunt them.
Right.
When you have a totally objective person, hey, come on, I don't care what you do, I need the money.
Right, yeah, yeah.
It would take a burden off you.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely.
But I don't want Brian to be mad at me when I make that recommendation, because he doesn't want to lose you as the executive treasurer.
I do have a couple of questions as far as being part of the contract. Are you saying that per contract, we need to have this person in place? Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah.
Okay, so, then I do have a couple of questions, all right? So, always our red flags that have come up have been like concessions, we collect cash at concessions, and that, and there's, so having a treasurer or paid position, how does that rectify that?
Those are some of the internal control details that I could help work out with, with the position. It would be, if you had a paid position in here, the person can say, at the night concession, case in point, you close at 8:30, I expect the, there's the envelope with the amount of cash you collected in the slot at the MYA, so when I come in, I can reconcile your cash register receipt to the cash, and say, here it is, and I expect it there, and if it's not there, they can pick up the phone and say, where's the money president of XYZ sport? And say, we need the money. And then it gives a stick with the position, the, now this is a paid position, they actually have a stick to go out and say, hey, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, and then report back to you and say, they're not cooperating with me. And then that's an executive board decision with that or, that sport, to say, hey, you either gotta start, get on, get on board, or, you know, we might have to go into.
I don't, I don't want you to get the wrong idea, I'm not against this position at all, because I believe years ago, I was for it, and we tried to get someone into that position.
There, there's some work that needs to be done.
Right, no, I just have questions about, we have a treasurer in place, but we still have, I'm saying, if we have our audit next year, are these red flags gonna come back up? You know what I mean?
They definitely are, because June is, in a month.
And we also discussed in the past, because when our audit is due, we also have our budgets due at the same time, right?
We do, yeah, so it's.
In the new contract, could we talk about maybe separating those by six months?
You could bring anything forward to the town.
Just so we're not trying to do our, physically, your budget for a year and a half from now, same time we're trying to turn in our audit. I mean, we are all volunteers, it's a lot of work for the volunteers to get all this done. I mean, we do put a lot of pressure on them, and obviously, it's not, hasn't happened, you know what I mean? So.
I think that's the reason for the position, so you, you don't have to do it. I think there's a reasonable amount of time already allocated for, for the audit to be completed. I don't know, what is this?
Ninety days, it's like.
You get 90 days, maybe a little bit longer, but if you have a person on that's always keeping on track of it, it's so much easier to just pull, pull together, because you're, you're accumulating all that information, and, and updating things as things go on, so it's not all this mad scramble to pull everything together.
So, if we had all the paperwork at the MYA when Derek came?
Yeah.
And I gave it all to him, we would have been done. He would have brought it back to me in August, like he did, and we would have been done. But there was missing stuff, and there's always that small, you know, overlap to the year, they want to see what you did in July and August, so that you're not moving money to July, because you know they're only looking at last year. So, he did ask me for a few things that were from like September, that would, that I didn't give him, because it wasn't part of that year.
Yep.
But we would have been done, and that's why I keep harping on everybody, I need all the paperwork by the end of June, so that then the pressure is off them, and I don't have to be the nag, and I can just give the auditors everything. I gave them everything I had, and there was still missing documentation.
There you go.
So, but you're right, that the, that we struggle with having them get the budgets done by August, and then having to give me paperwork. But if I had all the paperwork, like, July sometime, the auditors take like two or three weeks to go through all the paperwork and do their findings, and ask for a little bit more, but I should have all that, if they're bringing stuff to me on a regular basis.
Your bookkeeper will be doing that all the time, on a consistent basis, so it won't be at the last minute, all the paperwork comes in. You'll have monthly reports, and things will be reconciled every month, so you.
You don't think it would be too much to ask for the bookkeeper and the auditor, or the, I'm sorry, our treasurer, higher position, to do a budget and the audit at the same time? Trying to get both in at the same time?
Well, the, the bookkeeper would just keep your books, and you would do your budget, so you wouldn't have to do both.
Okay.
But you can talk, talk to them about, you know, the period of time. We just don't want too much time to slip by, without having, you know, like a firm deadline, because we're, you know, the experience that we're having, and you're having, is that these things aren't happening, and the council has a really big responsibility for giving out money to an org, we're the organization, but to make sure that the money, just like the money that Paul oversees for the town, is, you know, exactly, all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Okay.
Just one more thing, and for you, too, because once the audit's done, you put paid to that year.
So, is it, so we're still waiting for the audit, is that what, so when that happens, we'll disperse the payments to the MYA at that point? And if that's how it would work, do you have an idea when that might, when that program will be getting everything wrapped up for you?
Everything is all done.
Okay.
The tax filing is, tomorrow, I have to send them that document that you signed, so that they can file our 990. So, everything's done, but they're saying that, like Eileen said, the information that we got last year, and our management report is the same. They're saying that they are not gonna make an opinion on our financials, because our, so they're really, I mean, we're done.
So, but will that get the money to them, recognizing that that's what it is? That's up to the council right now. All right. You know, that's, they're late, you know, it's up to what the council wants to do.
It's, it's not about being late, it's about having financial statements that mean something.
Right, when, when, last year, we obviously gave them the money, with that decision of the accounting, of the accounting firm, the auditors, there we go. So, that's what we have to decide if we're gonna do that again.
No, I think the, the question really was that, do you, you were asking us if, if we would release the money, and I, I don't know what the answer is to that, because you don't, the audit has a purpose, and even if you receive the, the audit, it has not served the purpose.
No, and I understand that, and it did in last year, so I don't recall what our conversation was of why we released it, which I'm, I'm generally in favor of, because I get the difficulties that everybody has here. I, I, you know, it just, and I can't get my arms around why a program won't try and cooperate, understanding what position it puts the MYA in as a whole, but I do understand that they are volunteers as well. But to drop off information, just to get it to somebody, so that they can get that wrapped up, seems like it shouldn't be that difficult, but, but I've never part, done what you guys do. So, I mean, I'd like to see them get the money somehow, and I get that it's not gonna be, I can't remember the word to use, a qualified.
Yeah.
You know, audit, so I get that, but I, I would like to get it going forward for them, because I do use the money for a good purpose, I understand, we're, you know, it's a little up in the air, we don't know exactly what goes on, and we really should, you really should as well. But if in fact, they can get that, that bookkeeper, it could be the heavy maybe, and get that program to get off a dime, I, you know, where you're, you're otherwise working, and couldn't chase them down like that, I don't know.
I don't think you've ever not given them the money. You've withheld it for periods of time, but you've never, you've always given them the funds when, when they give you what is necessary. So, I guess I agree with what you're saying, is that if something is now put in place, you can't, you can't go back retroactively and change things that occurred this past year, but if you hire a bookkeeper, that's a, that's a really good way to show that in the future, the audits will be unqualified, and, you know, the internal controls will be followed. So, I'm in favor of releasing the money once you get the audit.
Right, but we're still looking to get the audit for this past year.
Exactly.
And as you said, next month is gonna close out your books for this year, so your audit for this year is gonna be very difficult, given you haven't even been able to go forward with the previous year, unless some miracle can occur. This is, what, our third year in the contract? We've been trying to get this to help you to get better controls and handles on finances, and work with you on that. It's a little frustrating, obviously, from the town's perspective, that this isn't working out better, and we're still trying to work with you to find a good solution. I think what Paul and Eileen are suggesting of a professional bookkeeper, part-time or whatever, should help to encourage people, and to teach people, and get them. I realize there's turnover, I realize people don't want to be pushed and shoved in an area where they'd rather be coaching, or whatever, and, and, but those things, because it's a $500,000 organization.
Yes.
Need to happen.
Right.
And I, I think the council finds itself in a difficult position. More than happy to release those funds to you when you, when the audit comes in, assuming the audit, at least reasonably, says that things are where they belong.
Yeah. I think it's just a matter of not being consistent, and they, although they see revenue coming in, some of it, what the treasurers don't understand is prepaid money. So, when our year ends, June 30th, we have some registration money that comes in then, but is, but it's for August or September, like football starts their registration now. So, what they're saying is we're really overstating our revenue for June 30th, but we are, but we're not. I mean, I, I understand the whole auditing thing, so I don't think that what we're saying we have is not what we, we do have it, it's just not being stated properly with the revenue recognition that you're supposed to have. So, they are right, but some of it is prepaid money, that they're not gonna use until August. So, from a financial perspective, it should be on a balance sheet, and not on a profit and loss statement as an expense, or as, as revenue, because it's not earned yet.
Right.
So, I think that's really the, the issue with the revenue piece, is understanding when we take in money, and when we use it. So, you know, I, I don't wanna say that the audit, you know, they don't know, but the, the financials are right, there's just not, it's just not in the right year for the season.
Right bucket, or the right column.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think it's more that, and it's just because the treasurers don't know, and I guess I thought that we were doing everything right, so I don't know that I ever really asked, until I started really, you know, digging, and they were asking, and this year, I feel like they really worked with us better, and I just feel like they didn't want to offer up any suggestions, they didn't want to work with me last year.
The auditors?
Yeah, and I was just like, you know, I'm new at it, and, you know, I need help, I'm asking you for guidance, and I've, I just felt like they were, they almost felt like if they, I don't know, I just, I know there's all these laws in place for auditors, and they're always looked upon as, you know, but I really wanted help, I was asking for suggestions and how to.
Help us.
But they didn't want to, they just kept throwing me like laws, and, you know, you figure it out, and, you know, because there's always gray with everything, but, but I really feel like this year, Derek really understood, and he's willing to come in and say, this is what, you know, you need to do, so I was really excited, but then when he came back and said, yeah, we can't, he said, I, you know, we were close, but, so.
Paul, did you want to add something?
Yeah, the, that, that's, you know, on a cash basis, the, the cash accounting is one thing, the, the main point is, is that the internal controls, they got them in place, they need to be followed. Some of the programs are not following the internal control procedure. I think with having this paid position, bookkeeper, treasurer, whatever you might want to call it, the internal controls now will be a lot better, tightened, and followed. And there'll be new internal controls with it, between executive treasurer and this position. So, that, that's the crux, is the internal controls need to be followed.
Right.
So, I guess what I would say is, as, as the town council, you're not really interested in whether they do it on the cash basis, or the accrual basis, or any of those kind of accounting types of things. Nobody's interested in that, so if they get a qualified opinion, because you didn't follow the right practices, and put things, you know, in the right buckets, that's okay. But as long as the money that came into the bucket is still in the bucket, is what you care about.
Right.
So, that, whether, and that's where the internal controls come in place. If they're in place, if they're implemented, if there's checking, and checks and balances in there, then you can be assured that, you know, of a reasonable, without a reasonable doubt, with a reasonable, whatever, that it, that it, that the money is being accounted for, the money, not necessarily whether you know how to do and accounts payable or prepaid. It's just that the money is, because there's a lot of cash.
Right.
Okay, so sometime between now and June 30th, we need to come up with a new contract. You kind of hear where I think the town council's gonna be coming from, with respect to finding a way to get these internal controls under control, and, and being more supportive. I don't, I'm not inclined to suggest that we should extend the November date for the, the audit request, like Paul says, assuming you keep up with things. It shouldn't be difficult to turn the material over to the auditor, and it's just, like he also said, the, the longer you stretch it out, the, the more pain you just keep having. It's, it's like paying taxes, if we keep asking for extensions, it just compounds the issue, so.
And you run up against.
The next year, like you're in right now, which is a real problem, so. Any other comments from the council, or?
Do we need to allow for release of the money?
We can't until we get the audit.
Ah.
I don't think we can.
Gotcha.
Which hopefully will be soon.
Yep, yeah, I can ask him to write it all up. I should have it, maybe tomorrow or Monday.
Oh, good, okay.
Because he needs, that we need to file it by the, the 990 has to be filed by the 15th, May 15th, so.
Yes?
So, what we really, the most important part of the audit report will be, for us, will be the management letter, that addresses the internal controls.
Yep.
So, whatever they say about, oh, you don't know your accounting practices, it doesn't matter, what you're, whether you're following the money, and making sure that there's checks and balances are followed, that's what we would like to see.
Right, yep.
Great. Thank you. Do you have anything else you want to add, or?
No, we're trying.
We appreciate, I, we realize that, we do, and, and we really appreciate the MYA and the, and the program you guys put on. We're just trying to find a way to help get beyond.
I know.
The, the pain part of it, you know? Nobody likes having to deal with that issue, when you'd really rather be out coaching, or, or cheering, or whatever.
Right.
It's what I would rather be doing. That's why we have staff to handle all that.
And I think the MYA needs to know that the town council appreciates the volunteerism at all levels in the MYA.
We definitely.
So, I think that's why we're so motivated.
Fifty years.
As a matter of fact, Brian meant to ask you all to be joining us on May 18th.
Yeah.
For the fundraiser that is going on.
You have selling tickets, right?
I was gonna hit you up at our comment period, but I figured I'll do it right now, since I have the MYA here, and the muscle of Brian to make it happen.
So, I just want to make sure the MYA appreciates that this town council is very supportive of the program, very appreciative, and very proud of the program.
Thank you.
All of our children have been involved in MYA at some point, so I think our motivation is to continue that relationship, but as you, I think you appreciate.
Yeah, I definitely do. I feel a little deflated that I haven't been able to make it happen for us, so.
Better than it was.
I was really hoping, but.
Okay.
Excellent.
Awesome, thanks, guys. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
See you at the party.
Thank you. And moving right along, last but not least, in our agenda, numbered items at least, number six, the town council retreat goal session topic discussion. So, we talked last time about having a retreat, we set a date for June, what did I say, June 17th?
June 17th.
Yeah. At Buckley's, Great Stakes in their side room there, from nine to four. I presume, are we gonna try and get our moderator to come again? I presume, are we going to try and get our moderator to come again and?
Primax.
Primax?
He's already signed up.
Oh, cool. Okay. So I asked, and a lot of people did respond to an agenda, and I took and massaged it myself, so this is less played with by me. So if anybody has any suggestions, changes, or comments, or additions, now would be a really good time to come up with them. Hopefully, you've had a chance to at least take a look at them. We're in multiple categories, between building and ground, town buildings, fund balance. Why don't we go through them one at a time and see if anybody's got comments on the town building section?
In light of Paul's comments tonight regarding EverSource, do we want to include that as a part of the, part of the program? Pardon?
It's already underway.
Yeah. I mean, they're already working on the programs. We can, as part of maintenance, we can talk about just generally, maintenance around town.
Okay.
I'd like to also, in town buildings down at E, where the public safety building, where you have on number two, school district land or other locations or other lands, because I've been thinking of a couple others that we can talk about. This gentleman came in from the Shaw's complex there, and he actually talked about giving it to us so we didn't have to pay tax on it. I like that idea, so I'd like to talk about that and as well, possibly where the library property is in that regard, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's good or bad.
I think, I think it's really important, because we kind of had our kickoff meeting with the contractor that we hired to, you know, help facilitate the space needs study and with all the respective parties there, the police and fire. And we sat around and we were talking about it, about the condition of all three of the buildings. The central fire station, the south fire station, and the police station, all are in need of something serious. So if we're going to, if we're going to be doing a public safety building, it really can't be shoehorned onto a piece of property that may not be the proper location for times, you know, for, you know, getting to different places from the ambulances and the fire or being a convenient location for people to go to in the, in the central area of town for the police station, for instance. So there, there's, there was, it was surprising to me. I thought that that had all been decided and everybody was happy with the location and, and now.
Other options should be discussed.
Other options should be discussed.
Okay. So. That doesn't mean we're writing it off. It just means we're still considering it.
Those are the words from that gentleman that popped into town hall, and I happened to be there just a couple of weeks ago. I'm going, ooh, this might be an idea. And maybe not, but it would be a nice day to, a nice time to have that discussion.
Okay. So other options for, for location? Any other, anything else anybody wants to add or think about in town buildings? Fund balance?
Just a question?
Oh. Hi.
Eileen or Paul, do the departments keep a maintenance inventory or schedule or building inspections on the different buildings? Because, the Reed's Ferry got me thinking about that, that, you know, do they ever survey the buildings to see what major needs are? Because I guess the problem at Reed's Ferry, it's been going on for a few years.
Well, the problem is, the chief kept bringing forward a whole rehab of the building for $350,000 for a storage building, and I just took it off the budget. So, you know, I knew things that it needed work, but when you're asked for practically a brand-new building-
Exactly.
It's, it's really, it wasn't even close to being necessary. It's just basically a waste of money.
So I think the question is, yes, they do. I mean, the police department is monitoring the condition of their building.
Right. I was going to say, do the other departments do as well? Like, you know, what's going on at Wasserman?
You guys are monitoring the condition of these buildings. The library certainly works on their building.
Yes.
And so you get all of those on a regular basis?
No, we don't. But, so, this is, everybody knows what the condition of their own building is. So they live there or they work there all the time, so they know and they keep up with it to the best of their ability. But they're woefully undersized. They're, they're, the, they're put into buildings that used to be something else. They're down in the basement. They're, you know, there's, kitchen facilities are, you know, haven't been done for years. So it's, it's, they, they're making do, is what they're doing. They're aware of things. They're taking care of them as they occur, but they're making do.
So, but if there was something major that came up, like, three years ago, just if we had baited the critters at Reed's Ferry, you know, I mean, do they bring those type of smaller things to you? I'm just wondering, because when we were talking, you know, looking at the agenda item, did we need more information for that meeting to be able to talk about it from, you know, logistically or whatever? That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I would say to you that I had never been told about any critter problem until the bill came onto my desk for $16,000. And I, you know, it was, it was a decision, a philosophical decision about what you want to do to that building once you get to $16,000.
No, no, not, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
I was just saying, if we're going to talk about town buildings, you know, did we need any other supporting documentation to be able to have a conversation? So, thank you.
I think we'll have a discussion much like this, only maybe a little fuller-
Yeah, exactly.
-at that meeting, rather than get into that now. Fund balance, the policy and potential purchases? I'm not sure what that-
Yeah, what is that?
Because you do have a fund balance policy, and you do list certain things that you can do with fund balance, knowing that we're nearing the cap of 8%.
Okay.
That, you know, and you've been generously giving it back to the taxpayers, but there are certain things that you can do with it, such as help offset some of the, the safety complex if need be. So those kind of, that's, those are the decisions when you look at the fund balance.
Things that we can do with that.
Yeah, becoming more knowledgeable about what you can do with the fund balance besides giving it back to the people. There's other things to help offset in the future.
There've been several budget issues come up recently, and then, of course, there's always budget concerns. So we have listed here several things. Obviously, if there are any particular ones people want to discuss beyond that, that are long-range budget issues, we can do that.
Could we do gravel roads slash paving?
Yeah.
Because it really is integrated.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Yeah, whether we're going to address those specifically.
Okay.
Okay.
I think at some point, not during this, but some point, I know it was a great service to me, when Kyle did a presentation about how they determine the different categories or the status.
Yep.
And I think it'll be great for the new members to be able to get that, a shorter version, but maybe an agenda item in the future, because it really does help with my understanding of how they determine it, how a determination is made about who does, when the roads are done. So, not for this, because.
We had hoped that that discussion, all that information was in your package, and we hoped that Kyle was going to be making a presentation when we were talking about the gravel roads, about how the decision is made and all that kind of thing. So it's already been prepared.
Perfect.
So can I just, can I ask you something while I have the floor?
That was sort of a question, so yeah, go ahead.
All right. Wages, wages and benefits, what are you looking for there? Who wants that and what are you looking for?
We're just, I-
For information for?
I think we're just looking for just a general idea of where do we see the trends in wages and benefits? Do we, do we see any further efforts on health insurance or life insurance or any of those kinds of things? It's a long-range planning question, not a specific this-year type thing.
Great.
Along with things like tax exemptions. Athletic fields comes up just about annually. Somebody put in a, land is obviously a problem, and it's a premium. Do we want to put a committee together to look into that? Those are things we can discuss. Anything else relative to athletic fields that we want to specifically talk about?
If we're going to talk athletic fields, Tim Tennehavet presented to us back-
There's a whole study done.
Yeah, there was a whole, that really should be included in our binder. If we're going to revisit the issue, talk committee, we ought to have a copy of the work that, I don't know if Tim Tennehavet did it on himself or he had, excuse me?
There was, like a subcommittee.
Okay, so I really think that needs to be dug up and reintroduced so that people can be refreshed at the work that Tim and his group had done at that particular time, 2012, 2013.
If you don't mind, I, there's a lot of changes that have happened, so some of the land that they talked about is no longer available. Like, they looked at the flatly land as one of the spots, or, you know, whether they want to have it at Horse Hill or those kinds of things. And so we'll make sure we put notations in there, because some of that information is stale.
Right. I agree, no, I agree with you, but I still think that the, the gist, the flavor of what the report presented, at least can give a high-level approach to how we should think about this. Thank you.
So, trying to speed this up a little bit. Parks, we, we obviously have been discussing the basketball court and skateboard park. Obviously, ongoing discussion about Wasserman, the state of the buildings, where we're going with that, future efforts as far as the dock and waterfront are concerned, boat ramp. Boat ramp is with the one on Natick Lake, or is that, okay, that's not the River Boat Ramp?
No, 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 sorry. That's, that's not the Natick Lake Boat Ramp. That's the other boat ramp down at-
Mass Road.
Mass Road, Mass Road versus-
Or Greeley, yeah.
Or Greeley. That discussion, I guess it's back on and off.
All right.
So that, I think that's what, that was about, one of the councils put that on. I think it was Councilor Albert, actually, wrote that as a discussion item.
So it's a boat ramp on the Merrimack River, wherever that might be? Under new development, there's a lot of places listed here. Presumably, we'll just talk about where we see the trend of the town going as far as housing and residences and stuff. Does anybody have any special comments in there?
Not much left.
Of land, but, yeah. Some of these may or may not have been developed or moved forward, but. Town departments, future staffing, again, long-range planning, I guess, the impacts of the building that's going on, how that impacts the different departments, and what we expect or anticipate for space needs, which kind of goes along with all that other good stuff. Communications with residents. We've talked quite a few different times about different ways to get the word out and how do we, how do we warn or just inform people about what's going on or what might be things they need to be watching out for.
Well, whatever we do must work, because we get 4,000 hits for the Hudson Truck or whatever. Something's working. I don't know what it is, but that's pretty impressive.
So I'm putting it on the forum.
Yeah. And we did talk about that, actually, before, so, yeah.
Okay. EMS four, do we, do we have, are we looking for an update there, you think, or? History and status, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. Wastewater sewer expansions, we need to start now planning for next year's vote, because it's going to be tough coming on the heels of the one we just passed.
Yes.
Comcast contract, are we beyond-
Yes.
-renewal date now?
We have a, yeah, we have a committee, right?
Which Barbara's a member?
My understanding is that it did go to the lawyer, that there'd be revisions that we wanted, the committee wanted, for the contract. And my understanding is it went to the lawyer, and we were waiting to get it back. But Comcast has already seen a preliminary version of it, and they're in agreement with it.
Oh. So, right, yeah. So.
I'm sorry. So I guess that, pretty much, that's the update, I would guess, unless, unless you, you know, we get the letter back, the agreement back from the attorney, and you can just put that agreement on there if you'd like.
Okay. And then road, bridges and infrastructure. I think we still need to continue to talk, just so it keeps it up in the front, the FEA ever turned back widening. And certainly, the noise barriers has become a question.
In fact, I'm waiting for Councilor Albert to get back, because he and I are supposed to be working on a letter.
Right.
So as soon as he comes back, hopefully early next week, right? We'll get that done. And while I'm away, it can be presented to the-
Because you're not going to be here next week.
And I will not be conferencing, just to let you know.
Thank you.
No.
From Greece.
From Greece, no.
That chewed at me not being here.
Somewhere in between. What?
I'm watching some of the meeting livestream on my phone, and I wanted to participate, and I go, and I'll never do that again. And I hate the conference, because it's, I've done it once, and a non-public meeting was terrible, but anyhow.
Okay. So that's basically what we're going to talk about. We've now made that public. Does anybody have any other thoughts?
Well, finally.
The only, if, at some point in emails, there was suggestion made, I think by Nancy, but I'm not sure, about prioritizing in case we run out of time. Roads, bridges and infrastructure, I don't know, in my mind, it might be more important to move it up so we don't, it doesn't fall off the end. And the Comcast could be last, because there's nothing much-
Because there's not much to do there?
...in agreement. So, so I don't, I don't know. If that's what the plan is, we might be able to get it all done. They do a pretty good job muscling through.
Every year we have that. Yeah, we just, and it really does a disservice if the important things are at the end.
Right, because the, right, because you're in the fifth or sixth hour, and it's just, it's, it's not pretty sometimes, so.
And it's not that, and it's not that we're running out of steam.
It wasn't? I thought that's what it all was.
Never.
But, so I, prioritizing whatever the chair thinks might be best, I'm on board.
Like, even the- You have a priority suggestion. I mean, I have no problem with moving roads, bridges and infrastructures higher up, maybe even behind town buildings, but.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I would agree too.
Can you take notes on that, Paul?
I did. I'm taking notes on all this.
Thank you.
And maybe move, maybe move fund balances down for her?
Paul?
Paul? We, meaning Chairman Kinnick and Becky, myself and Eileen, did go through this, this agenda. Basically, the line was drawn in the sand of what did we get through over the last couple of years? How far did we get down? And basically, what this agenda is, is how far we got down in the last couple of years. So unless we get long-winded on a topic-
Oh, we never do that.
Never do that. But unless we get really long-winded, we should be able to touch each one and maybe the MS four and the other, some of the other stuff, move down. Can we move down to the bottom just in case? But we should be able to get through this whole agenda at this. And I'm telling Rick to make sure we get through this whole agenda.
Oh, like, we pay attention, ain't we?
I know.
I know. Exactly.
But, so, for instance, the MS four is a very important thing, but you can get an
update on that anytime, at any meeting.
That's right.
So you don't necessarily have to have it at this meeting.
Because that's just an update. That can be done as an agenda item.
Yeah, I agree.
Right.
So put that sucker down.
We can do that. And maybe the fund balance would be, go towards the back, just because I think it's more of an update than a, I know, but.
We'll get, we'll get to it.
We're sharing the pain here, you know, it's just.
Yeah, we had to stop it for you.
Two different topics today. Anything else anybody wants to suggest? Barbara, you said-
I lost that thought. I think it was the fund balance.
Oh, yeah, you did say fund balance.
And I think maybe even wastewater could go for an update meeting, at a regular meeting. I lost that thought, I think it was the fund balance.
Oh, yeah, you did say fund balance.
And I think maybe even wastewater could go for an update meeting, at a regular meeting, you think so?
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Wastewater's down.
So that will take a couple of things off, at least, that we can get at a different time.
If need be, yes. Okay? We good? Any other thoughts? Seeing none, we'll move right along. Something I'm terrible at doing. That brings us to minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move the town council meeting minutes of Thursday, April 25th, 2019, with the following modifications.
Second.
Four, lines 11, 29, and 33, replace William with Bill, please. 11, 29, 33. God bless you.
We're all sneaking tonight.
On page five, line 29, it reads, Vice Chairman Boyd stated his recollection. Can we cross out stated his recollection, use the word acknowledged? Because I actually had a copy of the email there, and I was going to bring it up at the end of the night, so I acknowledged receiving the email from Representative Murphy to Representative Stack. Same page, line 38, it reads, understanding there is ledge in that area, can it read ledge in the area? On page seven, lines, line 25, people might not know who Senator Gillibrand, Representative Gabbert and Papas are, their first names are Kirsten, Tulsi, and Chris, can we add And then on line 26, all candidates, all campaigns except candidates Trump and Weld, can we please refer to President Trump as President Trump and not as a candidate? And Governor Bill before the word Weld. Line 28, same page, insert the word Gene between Senator and Shaheen.
Can...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Can I make another recommendation?
Go right ahead.
Our minutes are getting way too detailed, in my opinion, and a lot of this could be just summarized as inviting candidates and things of that nature.
I, I would agree with that.
Rather than all of the specific detail information, because then it becomes more of a...
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
...legal ad.
Same page 38, regarding the movie Devil We Know, quotations around the devil we Page eight, line 14, it reads, Council Harrington stated her remarks were the result of being disturbed by the statement made. The statement's just kind of hanging out there because it's not coming out there.
I have a suggestion.
Can we put like parentheses, article in the...
I have a suggestion, because I would like it to read...
Go ahead.
Council Harrington stated her remarks were the result of being distributed by this, disturbed by the statement documented in a local newspaper.
Perfect, thank you.
That children. So take out made, and add in documented in a local newspaper.
Same page, line 43, I'm probably being picky on, but...
Really? Did I say that well?
Senator Jeb Bradley, and if we could figure out who Representative Foucault is, can we put a first name there? Because it's just page nine, line one, Senator Shannon Chanley, line four, same page.
You know, we often refer to everybody on the council as Councilor Albert or Councilor Boyd.
Right.
I'm not sure, it's terrible to leave off their first names, but...
Okay, that's fine. Then, line four, Representative Dick Barry. On page 11, line four, seconded by Councilor Boyd should be Vice Chairman Boyd, to be grammatically consistent. Question on line 24, the sentence reads, the town has entered into a contract with Shear McChrystal Palson Architecture, are those names spelt correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. Then on page 12, somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to remember how we've, how the, how the minutes have been presented in the past. Under old business, it has the title solo panel assessment discussion submitted by Town Manager Eileen, and then I always thought that the minutes went on, but now, there's a new line there that says the town council should be presented with information regarding how solo panels are assessed in the town of Merrimack, and this has been consistent in this, these minutes, and I, I don't, I don't remember seeing them in the past. I guess my, my question is, do we want to include it to, to kind of introduce the topic, or do we redact it and just reflect the minutes that's actually being, being discussed?
Well, it's indented there, I think it's what we have on our agenda, so it just kind of pulls that piece out of the agenda and says that's what we're talking about, but...
And I, and I agree with that, it's just, I don't remember, in the eight years that have been on here, I don't remember seeing something like that on the minutes. I don't know, just, it just kind of popped out.
Paul? I can't speak for the minute taker, but I also remember that part of the discussion on one of the items from a previous minute in the minutes was to move Sarita up, who discussed a topic of the PFAS. I think she, and like I said, I can't talk for her, but I think that's what she was doing, and yes, when I have researched past minutes, it's always been new business, item number one, and then...
The state bent from the...
The state, what it, what we pertained, what, what the item was.
Okay, so I spent that before that.
What the, what the item was, so that when you're looking for it, you can go right to that or do a search on that, and then find it when you're looking at past minutes.
Okay, okay. Page 15, line, lines 31 and 32, spacing, please. Page 21, lines 22 and 23, add a space, please.
Did you push major?
No.
What did you have on major?
He had time, obviously.
Excuse me?
Did you do the one 21?
21, spacing between lines 21 and 20, 22 and 23. On page 23, line 42, my wife's name is with one L, not two. Wait, wait, wait.
Oh.
42.
42, thank you. That's all I had, I'm sure Council Healy's going to correct me on a few things.
She has one.
I've got a couple.
Go ahead.
Okay, page six.
Page who?
Page six, line 15, here's my glasses on, the word symptomieology. That's really, that, that should be the word symptomatology, which is spelt S Y M P T O M A T O L O G Y, which is the science of determining symptoms. Okay, on page nine, line 39, can we get rid of one of those, we had, there are two N's there, back-to-back, I N, see at the end of the line?
Oh, wow.
So we can get rid of one of them. On page...
Pick whichever one you like.
Yeah, page 13, line 30, Tesla shingles, Tesla should be capitalized, that's the name of the company, like the cars.
I agree.
Same company. Line, I mean, page 18, line 24, he spoke crushstone being put down, I, I think it probably needs, he spoke that crushstone was being put down. And then on line 33, there's some grammatical stuffs in there, he asked for clarification, maybe comma or a period, the town's CRF fund, I think, put a period there and then just capitalize the.
Yeah, that works.
On page 20, line five, talks about the master list, which is the list of all drainage projects that residents call, maybe say about, and then a comma. And last one, on page 21, line 39, Chairman Koenig stated that the intent to be to note the council, how about stated the intent was to note the council has accomplished the annual town manager evaluation. That's all I had.
Um...
How do you want that to be?
Well, I stated the intent, you could say was, sure, to be to note. Whatever, that's fine.
Okay, now I'm not sure if this is accurate or not, page three, line four, 38, were there not five of us here that night?
Cash, there was six of us.
There were six of us.
Right, so it should be five, zero, one.
Right.
Because there were five of us, and you abstained, not four.
Well, he was out of the room when the vote was taken, there were only five of us in the room at that time.
Ah, then that should be noted.
It is.
It is.
Council Boyd was out of the room when the vote was taken.
But then I returned. Right, I stepped away, then I came back in time to vote for Tom for Chair. Doesn't show that I came back.
Well, only when the vote was taken were you out of the room.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed the above, I see where you're saying, so Council Boyd was out of the room.
But they never brought him back in.
When the vote was taken for the motion about me, because that says five, no, mine, that would be accurate.
Five, zero, zero is accurate, we can just change the way that's listed if you'd like.
Yep, you're right, no, that's my misunderstanding.
But line 38 should be five, zero, one.
Because you were returned.
I did return.
So there should be a statement as well, that you're back in the room.
Well, so when the vote was taken and returned, or something like that, so, because you were there for the entire discussion about the reorg.
Or, 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 line 22, line 22 reads, Council Boyd was out of the room when the vote was taken, that's fine. Line 24 reads reorganization of the town council, next, next line under there should say Council Boyd returned to the chambers, period, or however, however you want to word it.
Returned.
Yeah, Council Boyd returned, period.
And then it would be five.
And then the vote was five, zero, one.
And then 38 becomes five, oh, one.
I thought it was five, so.
That's a good catch, Nancy.
Thank you. And the other catch was what, we've already fixed, so.
Okay, any other? So on page 20...
Everybody's having fun.
Everybody's having fun. Line, line 28, it says Director Fox commented, he and the consultant conducted a through in April, I'm guessing it was a walkthrough, but I have a question mark, because I'm not sure what it was. Try and figure out what it is, because it just reads poorly enough, it's probably, well, it's not a walkthrough, because he was talking about the, the area, but a walk around or a walk something, but it was probably something other than a through. Tape, or the whatever, yeah. Okay, seeing no other corrections, we have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes as amended and seconded by Barbara. Motion by Bill, all is in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Finley's abstaining, so that's a five, zero, one, with Finley abstaining, have to count every time. Anyway, that brings us to comments from the press, and comments from the public, and comments from the council. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This week is National Nurses Week. My wife is a nurse, she works extremely hard at her job, so I want to recognize the nurses in our community, I especially want to recognize Council Harrington and Council Healy for the work that they've done in the medical profession throughout their professional careers, and if you bump into a nurse this week, please make sure you take the opportunity to thank them, because our healthcare system would not be, I'll be blunt, would not be functioning as it is functioning today without the dedicated services of the men and women who have entered the nursing profession. So thank you very much for all that you've done with your profession. Secondly, I want to take the opportunity to recognize a member of our community by the name of Chris Wyman, he's a call lieutenant with the Merrimack Fire Department, he also works at the State Fire Marshal's Office, he's a key investigator regarding fire explosives, arson, provides testimony. Chris was recognized after 20, 20 years of service through what they term the rigorous evaluation of his career, he's been given a credential by the Center for Public Safety Excellence, the Commission on Professional Credentialing, has given him the Fire Marshal Designation. He is one of 158 people in the world to have the designation, he's the fourth one in New Hampshire to have this designation as well, and based on the brief reading that I did regarding what the commission does, it is, it is an exhaustive review of people that looked to receive that particular credential, and, you know, they don't, they don't hand these things out lightly, so I really want to commend Chris for his commitment to the community of Merrimack, his commitment to the state of New Hampshire, and this, this recognition as, this credentialing as a fire marshal, I think is indicative of his, the level of professionalism and the level of education that he has given to himself, and into the commitment of fire science to be able to do what he does in the interest of public safety for not just our community, but in the state. So congratulations, Chris, thank you, Chris, and lastly, go Bruins. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else have comments from the council?
Since I already brought it up, I'll bring it up again, the MYA is looking forward to have anybody come to the May 18th, I guess, anniversary party, 50th year, now into the 51st year that the MYA has been in existence, and it's to recognize the volunteers, and it's at the Beer Garden, tickets are $30 apiece, and really, the vast majority of that money is going to be helping children who wouldn't be able to participate in the programs do so. And so, of course, I didn't bring tickets tonight because for no reason other than I just forgot them, but I can get them for you, checks would be made out to anybody in the community, of course, to the MYA 50th fundraiser in the memo, so they know where it goes, and so if you can be there, I'd love to see you, and I can get your tickets if you'd like, and just let me know.
$30, you said?
Yes, yeah.
And does that, that get you anything, or just into the party?
It gets you a couple of beers and appetizers that they're going to have there, they're having, Ed Garrett is going to be speaking, he's a well-known speaker who's traveled the country, I want to call him motivational, but I don't know if that's what he would say it would be, but he, I've always thought it'd be great to have at a, a town function if the employees were together to hear from the guy, he's just pretty amazing. They are, also, they're hoping to have Terry Benhart come up for special recognition for the number of years he served in Brian Harris's position, and so I don't know if they've heard back from him yet or not, but I know that they were trying to get that. So should be going, it goes from six to nine, I believe. be going, goes from six to nine, I believe.
Saturday, May 18, from six to nine.
And while people are speaking, I'm going to look real quick, so
Can you get the tickets at the door?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and also the recognition, and I'm drawing a blank on names, so, of the police, fire, and E M T of the year, happened at V F W, and so I just, I've drawn a blank on all the names, on one of the names, so I don't want to mention all the names at all, so, I just, that was a nice event that I was able to go visit.
And the, while we're talking about events, you, you announced the Public Works Open House, is this coming Saturday? Is that right? May 18, same day.
As well, yes.
It's going to be a long day.
Yeah.
That starts at nine in the morning.
And at nine o'clock in the morning, there will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony?
And there won't be any beer there.
There will be no beer there. No beer there.
It's cheaper though.
There'll be some compost to take home, but no beer.
I got plenty of that last time. Okay, so May 18, good, thank you. Anybody else? Nope, going once, twice, so much for comments from the council.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Bill and seconded by Barbara, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? We're adjourned, thank you very much, people.